Thank you, I call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, shirts of flag of the United States of America into a republic where it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before we start our agenda, I just want to take notice of the new wall art. We now have the community development principles presented for our viewing pleasure. And I have to say, it looks very nice. And Kevin, who's in charge of making that happen? Do we know?
Yeah, it was a long effort.
Long effort, alright.
18 months, many individuals had a part in it.
Alright.
Long awaited.
Credit deserved, far around. Okay, so first item on our agenda is the public comment. Do we have anybody in the audience with public comments? Yes, Mr. Tomlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the pleasure of driving through my downtown area this evening on the way up here. And I don't know why, but if I were a merchant like I used to be in a downtown area, I would be up here dancing on somebody's desk. The Nation Street area is full of, just full of puddles. The street is in terrible condition. And all I ever hear when I ask questions is, "We don't have the money." Well, winter's coming, and the condition of that street is not going to get any better when they put salt, sand, tractors, plows, and what have you on it. I also would like to know if the selectmen in their wisdom have signed a development agreement at this time for the project on Main Street by Mr. McDonald, who still owes this town a considerable amount of money for a previous project, which according to my information, you were not able to separate one from the other to use leverage for the second one from the first, which is the corner of Waldham and Parker Street. That is what is known in the parlance of planners as a gateway road.
Okay? Question, Kevin.
And it looks, it looks like hell.
Can I get an answer to your question?
Go ahead.
Kevin, development agreement on the Main Street project, was there one, or I don't recall one?
I don't recall one either. It was done under the, actually the first project done under the N B O D. I don't recall.
D O D.
Yeah, yeah, downtown. But I don't, I don't recall. I'll have to look back.
Okay, so Nancy, you're asking, we don't believe there was one done.
One what?
A development agreement done for the Main Street project that you asked about.
No, there isn't. And I asked when, before the project was started, before he got a demolition permit, I asked if the selectmen had negotiated, or the planning board had negotiated a development agreement, knowing full well that the gentleman already owed the town a considerable amount of money from the previous project, okay? Now, at this point in time, the project on Main Street has gone along pretty good, but I still don't think it's too late to get a development agreement from the gentleman. The other thing is, we recently activated the solar farm, and I'm wondering if you have any idea at this point in time how much money it might save the town in electric bill? And also, what is the progress being made on the LED streetlights, the replacements on the regular lights with LEDs? Thank you.
Alright. So Kevin, if you can give us updates on those solar farm and LED thing next meeting, if you know them, that'd be great.
Sure.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the acceptance of minutes. And the first one is the minutes of August 14, 2014. And I asked before, we consider a motion if anybody has any edits to those minutes?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
I have some edits, so.
Oh, you have edits, sorry.
I was just asking if you also had edits.
No.
My edits are three. The reference to the Pledge of Allegiance and public comments, that was not part of the agenda at that meeting. That was a special meeting, so that was not part of the agenda. And then on page two, the tax rate goal, text should really read the tax bill goal, 3.5 percent comma, real estate tax increases at state average. And I'll give those little edits to Jason. If there's no other edits, I would.
I have one quick one, though.
Okay.
It's under, under the goals for me, communication, TAs, new blog, mailing warrants, Beacon Villager, and newsletter. I think that was just a quick typo, so I'll just add it to yours.
Okay, we're good.
Just append it.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August 14 as amended.
Second.
Motion is second. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor? Vote three, nothing, that passes. I have a request for the minutes of August 19. I had earlier suggested that some of the topics needed a little bit of context intro, and I think I got a lot of context intro. Maybe there's a middle ground that we can go for. And I asked Jason if you'd take another look at that and see if you can find some middle ground on the amount of text. And keep in mind that we can always do attachments of documents that were presented in the minutes, and we don't have to include them word for word in the minutes.
Take a second look, Bill.
And then the other minutes are August 27, 2014. A, I guess you call them minutes.
Summary.
An abbreviated, yes, a summary of a attempted meeting. Do we have any comments on those? Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for Thursday, August 27, 2014.
Second.
Motion is second. Do we have any further comment? Alright, all in favor? Opposed? Not voting?
Absent.
Okay, doesn't mean you can't vote, but okay. We have a, motion passes by a vote of two to zero to one, with Selectman Creel abstaining. Now, we have correspondence, and I make a motion to accept the correspondence items A through S as listed on the agenda for September 2, 2014. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor of accepting the correspondence? Pass is three, nothing. We have an assent, consent agenda to, an appointment to the Maynard, Green Communities, I gave it over to Kevin. Green Communities Committee, and it's appointing John Edison as a at-large citizen representative.
I think it's Edson, no, I, Edson.
Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Moved to approve. The consent agenda is printed in the agenda.
Alright, we have a motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Three, nothing, that passes. Item five is a request for a pair of one-day special permit liquor license sales for the Maynard Lodge of Elks. Is somebody here to speak on those? Wow.
Hi.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself for the record and tell us why you want them.
Okay. I am Florine Humannick, East Street, I love that, club manager for the Maynard Elks. We have two separate functions coming up. One is our Family Day on September 20th. We're looking for the one day outside. Alcohol will be served inside, but we're going to rope off an area for picnic tables for serving food outside with them, and so that they can go in and out, but it'll be a roped-off area. And then on September 27th is the Gates reunion. Maynard's Remember and Own is holding the function. They want to do a fire pit down to the other side of the parking lot and be roped off, and we're going to just serve beer for that one function.
Okay. Excuse me a second here. Do we have any questions from the board?
Yeah, it's a quick one, Bill. For the Family Day, is that intended to be alcohol served outside as well?
It's, they'll have it in their gla, not served outside, but they can go.
Be able to bring it outside.
Go outside, but come back in with it, yes.
Okay. The other one, I understand, is a multi-year reunion for Maynard High School classes for several years. The other question I have is, I thought I saw something in our packet. Perhaps it was somewhere else that I saw it, but that there was a request from the police to have a detail for one of those events, is that accurate?
Yes.
For both of those events? Okay. So that'll be something you guys will take care of, okay. That's fine, that's it.
And I'll note that both licenses are suggested to include the provisions that they're beer only, fenced-off area, single monitored entrance, no smoking allowed, all servers with tips training, and police detail required for each of the two. Any comments, questions?
That's correct.
Yes.
Bill's, okay. No, I don't have any other comment.
Kevin, anything for staff to add?
Nope, I suppose I had the police comment with regards to the details, so.
Okay. And I'm sorry if I wasn't listening too carefully, I'm a little distracted here. They're both beer only, right? Or is one?
One is beer only, the other one is, the serving will be inside. So it's a matter of just having the container, the going out.
And which one's?
Family Day is.
The Family Day.
Which is the 20th?
The 20th, correct.
So question on that license, does that need any special reference to that?
With no outdoor serving.
Just says a one-day sell beer.
Yeah. That could probably be, that one could probably be revised to reflect.
That's just for consumption outdoors, correct?
Exactly.
We can authorize use of our stamps if we vote in favor, and that way the, we don't have to hold up approval.
And that one, because it's just consumption.
With the amended.
Yeah, it's not just beer, whatever.
So beer sales outside and all alcohol consumption outside, I got you. Alright, any questions from the audience about the liquor licenses? Okay. I'm going to try to do the easy one first. I'm going to make a motion to approve a one-day license to sell beer to the Maynard Lodge of Elks, license number O D L 15-ELKS-092714, that being for sales and consumption on Saturday, September 27, from 8:00 p.m. to midnight. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor? Okay, motion passes, three, nothing. I make a motion to approve a one-day license for the Maynard Lodge of Elks, license number O D L 15-ELKS-092014 for sales and consumption of beer on Saturday, September 20, from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and further for outdoor consumption of alcohol on the same date and times. Do we have a second?
Second. I do have a question before we vote on this one. What's the contingency for weather? Nothing? Okay.
Oh, you mean if they're.
If it pours rain.
They'll move it indoors.
Everything will be inside.
Inside.
Will that be a problem with capacity?
No.
No? Okay.
Okay, any other comments? Alright, all in favor? Three, nothing, very good. We'll just get these signed, and we'll be good to go. Actually, now that I think about it, we can only sign one, and we're probably going to make a edit to the one for the 20th, and.
Authorize the use of stamps.
And Becky, you have my authorization, we'll use my stamp on that.
Thank you.
Mine as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, have fun.
Thanks.
Okay, next up is an appointment to the Community Preservation Committee. Do we have an applicant in the House?
Hello, gentlemen, Selectmen, how are you?
Greetings.
John Hesbok, Two Chandler Street. Interested in serving on the Community Preservation Committee.
Well, thank you for your interest, and give us a little about your background and what brought you to this committee?
So my background, I have a longstanding history of volunteering in the communities I've lived in. Unfortunately, Massachusetts does not allow me to volunteer, as I've volunteered in the past as a paramedic. However, I'm interested in moving Maynard forward, in trying different avenues and exploring different realms. I'm an aerospace engineer, so I like process and systems and finding solutions to a problem. I've served recently on the Board of Directors for the Co-op that we're trying to establish in town. Unfortunately, the time commitments and energy associated with the Co-op is not, you know, that hasn't, I'm unable to continue that, but the, I like to move on to the Community Preservation Committee as an opportunity to work with the town, enhance the town, move, continue moving things forward. Looked at the, what the committee does, and where the committee lies in regards to establishing, you know, projects going forward to improve the town. I've actually already participated in one of the projects, the Coolidge Park project. My wife is actually on the committee, and I actually help, you know, work with those guys. And there was, you know, obviously several in that little community of Chandler Street presentational and whatnot that contributed to that park. So that's an example of what that committee does, and I really like how that committee steps forward in that way. So I'm interested in participating.
Very good, very good. Any questions from the board members?
No. One question. Becky, how many positions are open on that, on that committee? Are you aware?
I'm not fully aware, we're still waiting for the town clerk's full report, but this would replace Diane Day Hills.
Okay, and do we know?
I think I can answer that question, because I'm on C P C. This would bring us to full complement now.
Oh, what? Okay, good.
Yes, we are nine, and this would be our ninth appointment, provided one does not get elected to Selectman.
Gotcha.
They now have a.
The other question that I have is, is the appointment slip for this in line with the terms, or is that an issue with this committee?
This replaces Diane's term.
Specifically to that date, okay. Because I know that's, we're trying to grandfather it all in and catch ourselves up, and.
Yeah, so this is a nine-month term.
That's okay, he'll be back in nine months.
Hey, try before you buy.
Any further comments?
Yeah, Tom, thank you very much.
No problem, appreciate it.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I will, how do you pronounce your last name?
Hesbok.
Hesba.
Hes like the gas station, Bock like the buzzer.
Hesbok, okay. I will move to appoint Thomas Hesbok of Two Chandler Street to the Community Preservation Committee for a term expiring June 30, 2015.
Alright, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor? Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Your appointment slip will be in the town clerk's office tomorrow morning, and please stop by this morning sometime tomorrow. There is a meeting tomorrow night, and your move is back there.
Now, the next item on the agenda is a request to refer a zoning application to the planning board, and this seems to be a, seems to be a new process that we're trying to get right, I guess. Okay, so we've looked at our Mass General Law, and apparently zoning requests can come from various sources, but technically, they're supposed to first go to the Board of Selectmen, that then refers the matter to the planning board, and the planning board takes it from there. So I guess, you're the applicant?
Yes.
If you can identify yourself and just state the request.
Jim Friend.
Mike Jason.
Mike Jason.
Go ahead.
We recently purchased approximately four acres on Acton Street, and it's right across from 55 and older that we've already done. And originally, that was commercial, and it's, you know, residential now. And where they're doing the rail trail and everything, it just, residential will fit in a lot better there. Because it's, you know, residential, you got the golf course, and rather than put a big warehouse at that, you know, in that triangle there. So what we'd like to do is change it to residential.
Okay, understood. And keeping in mind that the Board of Selectmen actually doesn't have a yea or say on whether we hand it over to the planning board. We could delay it for 14 days, is about all we could do. Any questions from the board member?
For this issue, no, but generally, are there any problems, given the fact that apparently we have not followed this, this process in previous referrals to planning board? Are there any issues that could be of concern for the community as a result of that?
No.
No? Okay.
Yeah, I would note that the Mass General Law language specifically states that procedural mistakes that are unintentional do not nullify any actions.
Okay, good. Alright, good.
Anything for you, Jason?
And again, one more question. We, these, as they come forward again in the future with other projects or whatever, there's no authority for us other than just to say, okay, we acknowledge that this is happening, and we move it along to the.
Yes, and we're required by Mass General Law to forward it to the planning board within 14 days.
And Mr. Chair, just if I could, just to that point, the other mechanism could be, you could designate the town plan to serve as the custodian for that intake and be the official intake. There's, you know, some policy things you can do, that we can do locally, to not have to go through these, but currently, this is the process.
Okay.
Because we don't have anything more formal than that in place.
I kind of like the notification, just so we know what's going on, so if we're in, we can go to the planning board meetings.
But to your point, there's no discussion, really, it's really more of a consent.
Yep, okay.
There's probably a specific reference to that document, right? If we're going to make a motion on it.
Do we have to move, or do we just, is there a motion required to forward it along, or is it just?
Yeah, it's just a motion to forward it to the planning board.
Yeah, okay, so I'll make a motion to forward to the planning board the request for rezoning on the map five, parcels 72, 73, and 95. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion?
Yeah, Bill, when, when this goes to the planning board, because it's a new process for them and for us, can, can you make it clear to them that, that this isn't any recommendation on any part of the board, it's just the formality of forwarding along?
I will be sure to, I didn't plan to teach them individually, but we'll make sure because it is a part of the process.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Alright, motion is second. All in favor? Alright, way it goes, off the planning board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you need this, Kevin?
Bill, do you have a, on the supermarket zoning change?
No, we don't have a request for that. We don't have any paperwork on it. You can come back to it if you find it.
Is there paperwork on that one?
I think we reached a job yesterday.
Okay. Yeah, I guess special counsel has advised the same on the, with regards to the.
The increase in square footage.
Yeah.
Has that, Kevin, had that already been received prior to this revelation? That it should go through the.
That just came from yesterday.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And it doesn't delay any of the process, that the hearing, the schedule and everything that's already been advertised.
Understood, I just, if we're looking for a piece of paper right now, that.
Yeah, there's no paper right here for that.
Okay. Alright, next item on the agenda is a chat with the Historical Commission on the Coolidge Building reuse. Greetings, gentlemen.
Good evening.
We are in receipt of your request that the Historic Commission be included on discussions with, about the reuse of the Coolidge Building. And just so you understand where we are, we don't know really what's going on with the building. We've heard rumors. We're poised to protect the structure of the building to such time as we could decide what to do with it, should it be vacated. But other than that, we don't know much. So we're happy to hear your comments, especially what you might have learned from the school committee, and what discussions the commission has had with them in regards to the building.
Okay, Jack McKeen, Three Country Lane, Chair of the Historical Commission. The, appreciate the opportunity and acknowledge one of the fact that we sent some information. The Historical Commission request is, I think, really quite straightforward. We're asking that the town be proactive in the preservation of the building, and the fact that you've allowed us this time says that you're open to that kind of thing. The question has come up, and I've heard it, and actually been involved in some of the conversations relative to the building, is, is it historic, or is it just old? Yes, it's old. The historic status was determined by an outside consultant back in 1999 as part of an inventory of the town's historic properties, and for the sake of the record, I will read the statement of significance by that consultant. The Calvin Coolidge School embodies distinctive characteristics of classic revival institutional architecture. It is also significant in its association with the rapid growth and expansion of Maynard during the start of the 20th century due to the success of the Assabett Mill. The thing which is buried a little bit further down that some people know, there is also a very local tie to a prominent local family, the Mullins', because Joe Mullins' grandfather actually built the first story of that building in 1906. I understand Chairman Kranshaw's comments, that there may not yet be some final determination, and that process is underway, so I think it's a very timely opportunity to have a conversation. What we have done is kind of think about potential future uses, and they seem to fall into two categories. This is, of course, based on the assumption that the town is moving the various things out of that building, and that some determination needs to be made. First, can the town identify a use for the existing structure as a town-owned or sponsored property? Some possibilities, a community center, probably not viable, given the costs to rehab the building, and I'll talk about the cost estimates a little bit further down a page. Potential home for the Historical Society, that's probably also not viable either. They don't have the funds, and they're a private, not-for-profit organization. As a side comment, combining those two at some point in some building would be a useful conversation to have, because within a community center, you have the senior community, and I suspect they might be interested in being docents or whatever, if there was in fact a facility that allowed the Historical Society to display its artifacts. The third suggestion, affordable housing. And there's an opportunity here, I think. The town passed and accepted a municipal affordable housing trust in 2008. It has never been staffed. It has never been staffed, but if this could be coupled to that and the, the trust staffed, that trust has its own set of financial powers in terms of soliciting funds, raising money, basically a fiduciary responsibility, including use of CPA funds. My understanding is at the moment that CPA funds dedicated, that's the ten percent required to be affordable housing, stand at just under two hundred thousand dollars, plus whatever percentage of the, the open seventy percent might be applied here. So, there's some monies available there which could potentially be used. I would also think that the Council of the Maynard Housing Authority could provide some expertise or value here as well as this discussion moves forward. Moving on from that, if it is not to be town-owned in the future, are there other uses which would preserve the building while potentially generating tax revenue? Veterans housing. Coolidge is one of the five sites in the recently completed Veterans Housing Study. That study did point out that that might require a connection to a nonprofit entity which might take it off the tax rolls, but again, there's, there's a potential opportunity there. Affordable housing comes up in this category as well, and all of the same comments I just made about town-owned would apply here as well, but it could be done by a third party that owns this. Another one is assisted living. And there's a very interesting example. The town of Clinton has a school called the Cochrane School, built about the same time as Coolidge, designed by the same architect. It's on the town green in Clinton. That building was dedicated as historical, actually placed on the National Register of Historic Places, but in nineteen ninety-eight, it was converted for assisted living and currently is forty-two units of assisted living managed by a corporate, Hall Keane Corporation, which is in the business of managing assisted living facilities. The Coolidge School is somewhat smaller, so it would have to look at the economics of, could there be enough assisted living units in there to make it financially viable? And the last item here, if it's not town-owned, conversion to rental units or condominiums. Sell the building, but hopefully with affordable housing restrictions and you could still use CPA funds to buy down some number of units in the building and get some affordable housing traction for the town. I mentioned costs. There was a, I don't know, a TAP or TAPI study in two thousand and eight, which the town has a copy of, that identified at that point in time, two million dollars as the cost, just to sort of remedy the building's defects. In two thousand and eleven, Town Building Assessment provided details of what have to be remedied, but that document did not include an update on those costs. I have had a conversation with the facilities manager and if in fact it was conversion to another use or set of uses, there was a, whether you want to call it casual or candid, you're probably looking at four to six million dollars to convert that building, bring it up to code, install elevators, you know, all of those kind of things. So, the cost is quite significant. And finally, in terms of a direction or proposal, I suggest there's an opportunity to be creative and that I would suggest that the board task town administration with examining public-private partnerships which preserve the building but return it to use.
Okay, thank you. I got three questions, I'm sure the other members have some, but my first question is, what does the school committee have to say?
I have not talked to the school committee at all.
Okay, 'cause you sent the same invitation for conversation to them. Granted, we were a bit tardy in responding, but they haven't responded at all?
I'm sorry?
They have not responded at all to your invitation to have this conversation?
I had no response from the school committee to the documents which I sent, no.
Got you, okay. One other question I have is, what are your thoughts on the lot size that would go with the building? We'd have to cut it up and part of it would stay playground, start of it would go with the, part of it would go with the site. How much needs to go with the site?
I have not examined it at that level of detail. In some of the conversations I have had, one individual raised the question of not the partitioning of the property. I think that would have to happen because you now have a town playground. The question is, would there be enough parking available to support whatever use is finally determined for the building? There is a parking lot there, so in the end, I think parking would have to be examined. And I suspect there will also be concerns in terms of what would the abutters think depending on what use the building eventually wound up as.
And the last question from me is, in a situation where, say, we sold it to a private entity with restrictions on maintaining facade, things like that, and how do we value the loss of market value of imposing those restrictions versus what we could have done with that money otherwise? For example, say we sell it for two hundred grand with restrictions and we could have sold it for three hundred grand without restrictions. Is there a more valuable historic preservation use for that hundred thousand dollars than Coolidge?
I don't really have a good answer for that.
And actually, I guess I'm not asking if there is, I'm just asking how we figure that out.
We'll take that as a challenge. I suspect through the Historical Commission, the State Historical Commission and other parties, we can come up with some, at least, ability to address that issue, whether it'll be very specific or not, we'll have to find out.
All right, questions from the board?
No, thank you, Jack. I, I think, you know, they're all good points and I appreciate that, you know, you are looking at both the, its value to the town historically and, you know, the fact that it's clearly going to be a pretty good chunk of money to, to bring it up. And you've brought up some, some good alternatives, some of which I thought of and some of which I didn't, so, you know, I would, I would think, I don't know, if it's something that could be referred to the town administrator's office or, or if there's a way we could put a subcommittee together?
Well, I'm just trying to figure out first what's really happening with the building.
Well, I think, can we create a clearer, the, the school committee has voted to leave the building, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
My main concern is whether they voted to maintain the building.
Yeah, I don't know how the vote was taken, but my understanding is they, they did vote to move in, the administration into the Fowler wing.
Correct, that was my understanding.
That should be on that point.
Bill, Ken's in the, Ken is visiting with us this evening, I don't know if you want to, if he can shed any more light on the vote.
Sure. The school committee, Ken, is the school committee going to maintain the building?
I think the school committee's administration's assumption is that it's town property and that once we vacate it, no one uses it for school, it returns back to the town. If that's incorrect, then probably something that ought to be discussed with the administration.
Okay. We don't, I have a pretty good idea of what the answer is, but I don't know if you're ready to state the answer.
No. You know, one thing that, that probably has some merit is if it's already been budgeted for, to keep it up, whatever costs are associated, at least through the fiscal year, be borne by the school department would be ideal, because they've already budgeted for the building. You know, there isn't, there isn't a zero cost even when you close the door. I mean, there's some costs associated with it and that still needs to be discussed and figured out.
Well, there's the, the cost that, just to maintain it in a fashion that will allow us to have these options that Jack just outlined. You know, if you don't plug the hole in the roof and there literally, as we've heard, is rain or snow coming in, the value to any potential purchaser plummets.
Yeah, being in a direct contradiction to our own potential plight.
Alan has a question or comment, Bill. All right, so, that question's outstanding, yeah, go ahead, Alan.
I just wanted to make a couple of points. I think it's very apropos that these are here tonight since, you know, your development principles, I think, that said respect cultural and historic resources and there she is, redevelopment and reuse, and that is the English school, in case you don't know it. But just from a historic point of view, again, when, when the school department abandoned the old Fowler on Summer Street, there was a reuse committee. David Hull, I believe, was the chairman, and it was a school committee building and it was a school committee contract, I think, with the ACT community, it was not the town. So, I, I think we need some clarification on that point. And then years ago, when the Roosevelt was, was abandoned and the school committee turned it over to the town, the town dropped the ball and never maintained it. They boarded it up and the roof leaked and the school was ruined, as we all know. So, you know, we're, we're not interested in going down those paths at this time. It's unfortunate that this is all happening as quickly as it is, but I don't think it's too late. You look around yourself in Concord and, and as Jack pointed out, in Clinton and other places, we are, are a state of old mill towns and old buildings, old schools, and people do beautiful things with them. I would hate to see us just abandon this property without making some attempt to find a good use for it in the future. I was lucky enough in October of last year with some, one of my colleagues from the Historic Commission to go down to Lexington to a Mass Historic Commission meeting, and one of the quotes that kind of stuck in my mind was from Sarah Delano, who I believe was FDA's mother, who said, "If you destroy your history, you just become anyplace." And we already have an image problem in this town. We don't want to be just anyplace. We're working hard to make sure that doesn't happen. And I think this, like Roosevelt, we take great pride in Roosevelt. I think we can do that again. And I would strongly urge that, whatever, quickly, there be a reuse. There was a Fowler reuse, there was a country club reuse, that we look at this and bring the appropriate people together. And if, if the powers that be, the wisdom of the town says, "We can't do anything," then so be it. The people have spoken, but I don't think we should just board those windows up and walk away. And I'm afraid what the consequences would be of that. And I agree with Jack completely that just because it's old, I mean, it is historic. The architect is Bateman, he's done buildings all over Boston, he's, he's well-known and we have one of his buildings here in town. So, I just felt I needed to address those issues. I think this can be done, but it would require the collective wisdom of many different groups in town. And I, I see us moving that way with the facilities office and the planner now and, and the leadership here in Town Hall and the school committee and others, we can do that. We, we can do something with this building, I truly believe that. Thank you.
Eleanor, just follow-up question to that. We've had reuse committees on this before and your commission's advocating for another one. What would be different this time? Would they have a different charge? Would they have different resources?
Possibly just the urgency, Bill. The urgency of the need is different this time. This time, there's no alternative. If, so, before there was always, you know, look, you know, if there was a reuse committee fifteen years ago, here we are fifteen years later and nothing has happened with the building. Not, now, the choice is find a use for the building or it potentially is lost to history forever, which is my biggest concern, is that once you knock that thing down, we're not getting it back. And that's a piece of Maynard's history that is gone forever. And it's, you know, it, it would be extremely unfortunate, so I'm hopeful that we can find, you know, some type of an approach that will help us to find a use for it. I'm concerned about the, you brought it up, Bill, the, the land attached to it because, you know, if somebody comes in and says, "Oh, the only way I can utilize this is if I take half the hill," well, there goes the sledding hill in town. And then you say, you know, well, and then you're infringing on the playground that we talked about earlier tonight, that, you know, there's so many issues that we need to be concerned about, yet we can control where we go with it if we do it the right way. So, I, I, I think it would be really the wrong approach for us to just say, you know what, it's too expensive, we're going to tear it down.
Okay, very good. Jason, any other comments?
No.
All right, well, Jack, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be talking about this more and one thing for sure is we're going to protect the structure, at least for the winter anyways, so we'll have some time. All right, next up on the agenda is the Maynard Golf Course Discussion. And I'm blanking out on what that is, Kevin, so...
Yeah, I'm going to ask Andrew to speak to the, the next two items on the agenda.
Okay, Maynard Golf Course and the Council on Aging Project, very good.
Sir, Chairman, the, the Golf Course Discussion is really the issue of getting it on the warrant. It's one of the articles we're proposing for the special town meeting. The reuse committee has agreed to come to the next meeting to present their full report. At our last meeting, you had asked that they appear, but they were unable to be available for tonight. They are prepared to do the full disclosure of their plans for reuse and I can comment on them in advance of their report if you have questions about it, but their report would be more thorough than mine.
I noticed that we have on Dropbox the old report, is there an updated version?
They're updating it to take into account some of the changes that have occurred over the summer with our intentions to use it as a center for seniors, beginning during FY-15. They see that as being complimentary to some of the four initiatives they have proposed already.
Okay. And the timeliness for regards to action at the special town meeting involves what?
We need to approve the warrant on the twenty-sixth, so their presentation on the sixteenth, and then the warrant article is really just asking that we put out an RFP for a lengthier contract for reuse as a golf course, accommodating these additional uses. So, that's, that'll be a town meeting vote if it's on the warrant. There's not really an action from this group other than their spirited enthusiasm for whichever reuse they prefer.
Okay. And the issue with the Council on Aging Project?
Any issues?
Well, I, we have it as...
Where do I begin? The, is this the next agenda topic or part of the golf course? Yeah, I've been meeting pretty much daily on this topic with a variety of people, including the folks from the Council on Aging. We have another meeting this Thursday at the Golf Course. It's our monthly meeting, but we're expecting a crowd and the audience of people interested to hear more of the details. I've worked with facilities to develop a strong framework of what the renovations would look like and what they would cost, and then I'll be working with the council members to sort of fine-tune that framework into something that they specifically want. So, for instance, the facilities office won't be picking out the precise location of the office space, the furniture, the color of the carpet, those sorts of things will leave to the members of the council, that level of detail. But he's making sure everything's ADA compliant and more of those big picture facility-type items. We have an estimated cost tonight of seventy-five thousand dollars, I'm rounding that up slightly to give myself a little wiggle room, mostly because we don't have good costs yet on furniture. And the reason for that is that the Executive Office of Elder Affairs recommends that any furniture we buy be furniture designed for elders, seniors, people with disabilities. Some of that is the height of the furniture, the accessibility for wheelchairs into tables, things of that nature. So, we're getting a catalog of that type of furniture specifically from Minuteman Services and we'll start there before we make choices.
So, if I may, Bill, that number, and I'm not going to hold you to that number specifically, but that number would...
Just double it. No, it's a pretty good number.
Would that include all of the necessary changes for accessibility from the outside and for, you know, any ramps and any, basically move in for that amount of money and you've got a place where these, our seniors can, can congregate?
Hey, I'm going to say yes with a big asterisk next to it. What we have is a moving target in part because it's still an active golf course. And if we weren't planning to do what we're planning to do right now... And if we weren't planning to do what we're planning to do right now, the golf course might incur, the golf course management company might incur some of these expenses. So, for instance, some of the windows in the front of the building are scheduled to be replaced next year. We're not going to do them as part of this plan because we know that they're going to do it. But there is going to be some direct overlap with costs that might otherwise have been borne by the golf course management. So for that reason, it's a bit of a moving target, but we're talking pretty small dollars at that point. The one specific example I can give you is the furnace. It needs to be replaced. It's on the capital plan for the golf course. But in order to heat the back of the building properly, we're going to have to tie it in. So that tie-in cost would be added and would be on my ledger. But it does include handicapped accessibility, a rear exit required, the building of a deck off of the ramp that will be used by both golfers and by seniors and other users of the clubhouse. All the renovations in the back, complete teardown of the locker rooms, complete buildup of usable space for office and functions. Privacy for the bathrooms. If you're familiar with the space, the bathrooms are essentially integrated into the locker rooms. You pass through them from the dining area to get to the locker room. There's plenty of privacy if you're in that area for the normal purposes. But when we convert the locker rooms to something else, we need to change up the pass-through to the bathrooms. So that's going to be borne by the renovation. That's not something the golf course would have done if they weren't doing what we're doing to the back room.
Is there an opportunity for, and I'm very supportive of the idea, for an opportunity for us to have a walkthrough at some point, just to have a vision as to what...
Thursday, 10:00 AM.
Yeah, I can't be there in the morning.
Selectman Gavin, I'd be happy to take you on a tour anytime.
Okay, good.
Bring your clubs. You have to pay 25 bucks. Get a card.
I used to golf and I gave it up.
Any questions, Jason?
Nope. Wait the report.
Prior to the warrant article being finalized, we would like to get that number as close to perfect as possible. But as I said earlier, we're meeting regularly with Facilities. We're getting real quotes on some of the renovation work. We'll have the furniture numbers. So we'll be very, you know, as accurate as we can be before the 26th.
And we'll have a discussion at that point as to where the funding would come from.
We have some of that worked out as well.
Okay. Unless the chair wants to get into it, we don't need to get into that this evening.
Well, we will when we talk about articles in general, but we don't have to do it at this moment on the agenda. All right, thank you. Now, item number 11 on the agenda is the policy for naming of public spaces. And we don't have anything in our Dropbox on that.
Yeah, there's nothing formally written up as we had the last time. It's really just a discussion phase. As you know, a couple weeks ago, a month ago now, we had a discussion as a board on the initial proposal, which was not received well by members of the public. And certain members of the board had some concerns or questions on it as well.
Concord policies.
So I went back to the drawing board a little bit, not completely, but a little bit. And what I learned through my exploration is that many towns, you know, a lot of towns have policies. So it's clear that there's a need for us, at least from my perspective, to have a policy of some type so that we know if we want to name a piece of public property, what the process is. Now, any, everybody that has this, that I've found, excludes schools, excludes, in our case, it would be the library because there's another elected board that controls the library. So whenever we're talking about town property for this particular proposal, it would be things that are under the care and control, for lack of other phrase, of the Board of So the initial proposal is that anyone, including town officials and members of the public, can propose a name for a public place. Now, there are certain towns, certain communities, that require that proposal to be submitted with signatures of, you know, 50, 25 people to support it, and then they move forward. I don't know. That's a point of discussion for us if we wish to proceed. But one of the other issues that I wanted to make clear with this policy is that I want to try to depoliticize it from the Board of Selectmen. In other words, if somebody came in and said, "I like Bill Crenshaw today, so I want to name the Coolidge School Playground after Bill Crenshaw," and everybody says, "Yeah, I like Bill tonight, too," and there we are, voting to name. I mean, right now, theoretically, that's the way the process would work because we don't have a policy for naming of our public spaces. So anyway, so my theory was to remove the board from that and get it somewhere else. And where would that go? Well, ironically enough, with the Historic Commission here this evening, I think that it's, that might be indeed the proper place to have the vetting of the name or the vetting of the naming of the property with the referral of the Board of Selectmen. So the theory would be that somebody comes to the Board of Selectmen and says, "I want to name Cool, I'll just stay with Coolidge, the Coolidge Playground after Bill Crenshaw." At that point, the board has a discussion saying, "Sounds good to us. We do want to have a name for that particular piece of property." So similar to what we did with the planning board issue tonight, we don't send it along to Historic with a recommendation, but rather we send it along with an okay, you can look into naming this piece of property. Then it would go to Historic to have a hearing on it, and they would vet the name. They would vet, they can come up with a process, whether there's a form to fill out and all the reasons, and then ask for the rationale for why the person, what the entity wants to be named the way it does. And they take a formal vote as to whether to approve that or not. Then, from there, it goes immediately to town, to the next scheduled town meeting for approval of town meeting on a majority vote. So in other words, the eventual authority, and this is just for, if we want to name a room in the town hall, this wouldn't apply. It would only apply for outside, big items. We can identify what those are as we proceed to make this a much more formal policy. But that's the theory. And it takes it out of the hands of the politicians, quote-unquote, and gives it to elected, I mean, to representatives of the community that are appointed that can, that have a knowledge of the history of the town, that have an interest in the history of the town, and can do that. I had a brief conversation before the meeting began with Jack, who's currently the chairman of Historic, and, you know, obviously, he hasn't had any time to discuss it. They have a meeting coming up, I guess it's two weeks from tonight or sometime around that, that he'll put it as an agenda item to see if that's something that they want to pursue. But that's sort of the outline of what I'd like to propose for a policy for this process. Many, there are so many, some towns that I found have a naming committee that when something comes up for, to be named, this committee is activated and it's made up of a member of the Board of Selectmen, a member of the school committee, a member of the Historic Committee, a member of the finance committee, and whatever. And they all get appointed to this committee and they talk it out, similar to what this proposal is. But I think this sort of streamlines it. I don't think that there would be a rush from members of the Historic Commission to start naming everything in town. I don't think that's the intent. It's really just for, you know, it would be limited. I think that the first line in the proposal that we had the last time is that the Board of Selectmen believes that the naming of town property should be done sparingly and with good cause, or something along those lines. And I still believe that to be true. So that's the outline, open for discussion.
All right. I guess I have three quick comments. One is that I don't, I don't see a need for a signed petition. Seems like the outline has enough checks and balances in public participation at town meetings to make that point moot. I like the idea of referring it to an existing committee because I don't think the town needs another committee. I like to minimize those. But, and I like the point about focusing on facilities and lands or buildings and lands, so we're not talking about, you know, a park bench or something like that.
Correct.
We're talking about a structure.
Correct.
We're talking about property. So that's interesting. Jason?
I guess my only comment is I appreciate the sentiment of the depoliticizing, but if you're just handing it to another board that's appointed by the board that's trying to shed the political stigma, I'm not sure that it really changes anything. And it's not, certainly not directed at the Historical Commission or any other board, whoever it was.
Yeah, yeah.
It seems, you know, it sounds like it adds a layer. You know, I guess I'd have some more questions on it as far as, you know, if they, if it goes to, in your instance, it goes to Bill Crenshaw Park, goes to the Historical Commission, and they say no. But there's a number of folks in town who really want Bill Crenshaw to have a park. Is there recourse? Or is there, does it go to town meeting?
I should point out that, you know, everybody always has a right to do a citizen petition straight at the town meeting, out damn near anything. So you can always do that.
Okay.
That's true. No process could ever overrule that.
Okay. Other than that, I mean, if...
So what's the next step on your journey? You're going to go to Historic?
Well, I think, well, yeah, unfortunately, they meet, unfortunately, they meet the same night that we meet, so perhaps I'll have to have a conversation with their chair and we can talk about different issues that he may have questions on, and I can try to answer them for you so that you can have, you know, something to bring to your committee. And if you have more questions, certainly feel free to come back to us. Does that sound like, Vic, we'll get to you. I don't want you to keep your hand up all night. Does that sound like something that the Historic Commission would want to participate with and would be, would be part of your mission and part of?
Well, I think we would like to have a conversation about it, but the immediate thing comes up in terms of scope. In other words, we name things for veterans, intersections, poles, so forth. So somehow, the problem needs to be compartmentalized or described in such a way that we can all kind of come together.
Currently, is it part of your mission to name squares or anything like that?
No.
No?
But should that get involved with honoring a veteran? I don't see a historic connection there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think, yeah, we need to, I think, do some work as far as figuring out, you know, breaking this down a little bit. I think, David, if I understand you correctly, the first step would be kind of a conversation with Jack, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Vic?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just refresh your memory that I was the one that more or less brought this up and I suggested that one of the playgrounds be named after my father, who was killed during the Second World War. And I don't want to take anything away from Selectman Gavin, but it seems like it took almost a whole year for us to begin to discuss this. And I find what's happening here is you talk about keeping politics out of it and all that stuff. And when you get all of these committees and everything involved, all you're going to do is have a big can of worms and you're going to create a big problem. They have named rooms in this town. They have named squares in this town. And they never, never, to my knowledge, and I'm not an expert, have gone to the lengths that you're going to go to. As far as I'm concerned, Mr. Gavin has probably done some earnest homework, but I think his direction is completely wrong. You take, you take and put up Joe Smith to memorialize a piece of property in town and take it to town meeting and watch and see what happens. You just open yourself up to a lot of comments. And at this point in time, Mr. Chairman, I really don't want to be part of the discussion because I don't think the discussion is going in the proper direction. You've allowed various committees and boards in town, this room is memorialized for Mike Giannottis, who came aboard in this town many years ago as a cedar worker. And by gosh and by gory, he ended up as the first town administrator. Well, that's great. But when you think about it, just a minute, what did Mike Giannottis really do for the town of Maynard other than serve 23 years in some capacity in the town? Was he good? Was he bad? Get up in the street and ask some people. You're going to go out there and you're going to ask people. They're not even going to know who the guy is. So when you do what Selectman Gavin is proposing, you're just opening yourself up to a lot of hard feelings, recriminations, and all the rest of the stuff. Thank you.
Just to clarify that point, specifically, rooms would not be part of this policy. I think I made that point. So if the Board of Selectmen chose to name a room down the hallway after somebody, that would be done right here as it is currently. It's evident, though, from the research that I did, when you, if you just Google "town naming policies," they have them, and they're all over the place. Right now, I don't think it's proper to, you know, Vic makes the point, well, you know, we've had names going for years. Well, just because it's been done that way doesn't mean that way is the right way to do it. I think there has to be a process so that there aren't hurt feelings as a result of somebody who wants something named after somebody. There's a process. We went through the process, and the process approved it or the process failed it. It's a process. It's not politics.
Okay. Anything else, Jason?
No.
All right. Very good. Before we take up Agenda Item 12, I think we should jump back to the second half of Agenda Item 7, Request for Zoning Applications. We have discovered our missing paperwork on our second zoning bylaw amendment.
I'd like to apologize. Our town planner, Bill Nemser, sent that to me this morning, all ready to go, and I overlooked it.
Okay. Check his email first from now on.
Bill did it and it was probably done right.
All right. So this petition is for zoning bylaw amendment, a proposed amendment to the Section 3 Use Regulations. And effectively, it's requesting a change in the allowable business uses, the sizing of a supermarket from 65,000 maximum square feet to 68,900 maximum square feet. So do we have any discussion on the zoning bylaw amendment request?
Yeah, real quick question. Bill, was that, so it sounds like a hard number was decided, or is that somewhat of a placeholder?
My understanding is that that was the number required for the proposed supermarket.
For the request.
And the number originally started at, I think it was 67,900, and so I see it ended up at 68,900. So I don't know if that was a change or they built in a little...
It was always at 68. It was always at 68,000. It was 3,000. The 900 was just a little bit of slight play.
Okay, I'm sorry. And this is, this is the request to the town, correct? From the applicant?
It's going to be sponsored by the planning board, is considered for sponsoring by the planning board at the meeting on Tuesday night.
Oh, yeah, that was my point. This is the request coming in through the Board of Selectmen, through the planning board. I got ahead of myself early.
Yes, correct.
So, okay, so this hasn't been heard yet?
That's correct.
Okay.
It would be referred back to the planning board if their recommendation will come as part of the warrants, if it desires to include them.
Very good. Thank you, Bill.
Okay. Derek?
No. As repeating the earlier... As repeating the earlier comment, this has nothing to do with whether or not we agree or disagree with the proposal, which really is just a recognition that we see it.
Yes, indeed. And the Mass General law is specific, even on things initiated from Planning Board has to come to us before it goes back to the planning board. Whatever, we're just following the rules.
While we pay Town Council.
So I have a motion to, to forward to Planning Board for their review and consideration, the zoning bylaw amendment proposal to Section 3 Use Regulations. Do we have a second?
Second.
Your motion is second. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor? Off it goes.
Mr. Crenshaw, could you mind disclosing who's made the request?
Uh, the request, coming to us from Planning Board on behalf of an applicant at 129 Parker Street. They, they have a supermarket, they've always had a supermarket proposed, and apparently it's slightly bigger than originally anticipated.
I just know that there was a lot of, because I participated in some of the discussions for the sizing of the supermarket as part of the co-op, and so I know there's a lot of thought that was put into the numbers that were chosen by the Planning Board and approved by the Selectmen. So, I hope that those minutes and that thought gets back to the Planning Board along with this request, so that we don't lose that history.
And that is why I made the point clear, that the fact that we're passing it along has nothing to do with our specific opinion on the request.
One point, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
The N B O D, which also was an option to be applied to that property, allows for square footage up to 75,000.
That's correct.
And that, but in this case, they are coming in with an anticipation of maintaining the industrial zoning, and that's why the number is less than 75,000. Had they exercised the N B O D, they would be, they would be able to build up to 75,000 with Planning Board special permit.
With plenty of other restrictions. Okay. And I would also note that this change applies to, would apply to all industrial parcels in town, so...
It would apply to all zoning districts. It's not, it's, it's just, it is, would require special permission for the, it's...
Okay. Okay. Agenda Item Number 12, Discussion of Special Town Meeting Articles, and we have a list of a few potential topics in our packet, and I note that we don't have any real specifics about them, so I'm gonna just upfront suggest that we're likely not gonna be able to finalize our warrant articles with only a meeting on the 16th of the month, and we're likely to have a need for a second, or an extra meeting before the warrant closes, just to nail down some of these articles. But maybe we can make good progress tonight and see if we can get a few of them out of the way. Also, keeping in mind that these need to go to Finance Committee, and Finance Committee is meeting on the 22nd of this month, and also on the 29th of this month.
Just to clarify, Mr. Chair, we do not have any language on these this evening, is that correct?
I don't believe so, unless Kevin can pull something out of his pile of papers. I was kinda hoping for the liquor license stuff. We've been working that for a while.
I can pull that out. In fact, I think I just printed it.
What was, did you place this on the agenda, Bill, or did...
Well, yes.
Okay, so, because the question was gonna be, what was the intent of tonight's discussion?
Tonight's discussion is to move forward on the discussion of these, such that there is minimal discussion later?
One in time?
Yeah, unfortunately, if there's no, if there's no language, I don't know what it is that we discuss.
I know, that's true.
That's the...
But one point, and just, I suppose we should talk about the liquor licenses, first of all. I just, my main concern is that they be consistent with the Board's action in June as to the number and types, and also the query as to why the heck we need three articles?
We don't.
Excellent.
I don't know why the three articles were on like that. It's, it's one article with an exhibit, and, I was pulling it up now, because it came in at 5:30 this evening. You all have it as we speak.
Ah. Well done.
So, this is the actual article, is a, is a home rule petition, to petition special legislation concerning liquor licenses. And then there's an actual Exhibit A, which is the petition to the House of Representatives. So again, this just came in just prior to our meeting now, from Town Council.
Okay, so, I'm looking at this home rule petition, and the discussion back in June was, we want to encourage economic development by increasing the number of liquor licenses in town, and we settled on a request for six additional licenses for all alcoholic beverages, to be drunk on premises, basically pouring licenses, and a retail package store license for wine and beer only, not full liquors. And that appears to be what this says. So can you just walk us through as to, what would be the article, and what would be the, what would we be asking Town Meeting to do, and what happens if it passes? What's the next step?
And one further question to add, what happens if it's amended on Town Meeting floor, and can it be?
There you go.
Like I said, I'm just opening this up, seeing it really for the first time myself, but I think the general piece is the actual article, to see if the town will vote to direct the Board of Selectmen, as is that whole first paragraph.
Okay.
Finishing with order of acting, any other manner in relation there, relation there too. And I believe the other is just, is part of reference.
And the other, the exhibit is, looks like adjusted...
Language.
Text for the law, legislation, I see.
Yeah.
I see. And, so the questions of, if Town Meeting were to pass this as stated, as written, what happens then? We petition the general court, and we hope that they act on it?
Yeah, I think so.
There's no guarantee.
Right.
It's a fairly common occurrence, as I understand it.
Right.
And do we know the question of what happens if it's amended on the floor of Town Meeting? Which presumably, I suppose, would be the number and type of license.
That would be the only piece here. Like, you know, potentially you could see a reduction, you know, reduce from six down to three, or even, you know, it could go the other way, but I think that would be the only piece that would be amended. Which I think would be, you know, would be allowable, would be as amended.
And these are not, as discussed by the Board back in June, these are not designated for any specific...
That's correct.
Person. They would be new, available for...
There is a request that, unofficial request, conversation of the developer for 129 Parker Street, that they would be looking for an, an all alcohol retail license at the request of the, the grocery store that they have a letter of intent with. It's a new concept style grocery store, and part of that, they're looking for an all alcohol retail. But they're, they would not need more than three at the most for all alcohol, that they would be looking to get, and then, as far as pour, and then a retail, all alcohol retail.
Is there a restriction currently in the zoning, as it exists today, at that particular parcel of land? What's the maximum number of restaurant slash pouring licenses that would be allowable under the N B O D?
Do you know?
I'd have to look. I don't think there's any.
There's a restrict...
The N B O, the N B O D was, restrictions are on square footage.
Yeah, that's what, the size of it.
There would be no address, there would be nothing to address liquor licenses. It would be on square footage, and I would have to go back and look at the language as far as if it was, if it actually broke out restaurant or retail space.
I just don't want to get into a situation where we are facing unintended consequences by approving something along these lines, and then the next thing you know, you have six liquor establishments down in one location.
Well...
So I'm wondering what type of restrictions there might be on the zoning, if any, that would have restricted...
You could end up with two there and four downtown.
Yes, I agree.
I maintain that we have more than six in a smaller area now, so...
Yeah, that would be...
Valid point.
I would, I would say that would be my point also, that you have three liquor stores in a block, so, and there's nothing there, there's nothing in the zoning that says that that can't happen.
Okay.
And I don't recall anything in the development agreement to that effect either.
Not to restrict that.
To your point about the retail license, the Board in June was pretty specific about not wanting another all alcohol, because we didn't want to compete with the small businesses currently in, in operation.
That was for the all alcohol.
All alcohol package store.
Yeah.
So, the Board settled for just a wine and beer request, and granted, it's a slightly different Board personality from June, but I'm not big on, you know, changing the Board of Selectmen decisions every other month. So, I, I like it the way it's written, regards to the number and type.
Yeah, just looking at, specific for that location, that's, that's the only information, was that the most they would need would be up to three full service licenses for the restaurants, and Price Drop would like a full retail sale alcohol license if available for the supermarket piece.
Yeah, I suppose there's nothing to stop them, as anybody else, from purchasing a license, existing license.
Any existing, sure.
Applying for a transfer, but, but... And then, one other comment, the text gives me a little concern when it says, the Board of Selectmen is authorized to approve amendments, which, you know, and I know that legal likes to throw that in to handle little changes here and there, but I just hope it's constrained enough so it stays within what's being asked of Town Meeting. It says, within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition, but I would hope that would specifically mean we couldn't change the number of types later.
Right.
I would say that's specifically the objective of the language, is the numbers.
So you're agreeing with Bill?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I don't really have an issue with the language, just the general public objectives of the petition. The general public objectives of the petition will be the number of licenses we're requesting.
Yeah.
That, that's the meat of the, of what we're requesting.
Correct.
If it gets amended, then it gets amended.
I got you.
I don't think that's a substantive issue.
Okay.
So, so that, in essence, that removes what you have listed on there as a draft controls for potentially three articles. It'd just be, it'd just be the one that will handle both additional requests.
So, I guess question to the Board, are we okay with what we see now? Do you wanna think about acting as, adding it as a article, or do you wanna wait and chew on it until our next meeting?
I think I'd rather wait, given that we just got it minutes ago, but the, it wouldn't be as, acting as an article, it would be as a...
You wanna set it as a control now, and then we debate whether we'll put it forward as an article?
Yeah.
Jason?
I think we should certainly put it forth as control. I don't know necessarily that I have any issue with putting it forward as an article. I think it's fairly straightforward.
Straight from legal, too.
They've completed their review? I'm just not terribly thrilled about approving things after a two-minute look see. How about we just set this as a Control A, and we'll be prepared to act on it at our next meeting? Okay?
Sure.
What else you got there, Kevin?
Well, if we go back to our last meeting, I don't know if the Board's had an opportunity to review the blight bylaw that was provided at our...
I'm sorry, was that provided at the last meeting?
Yeah.
Damn, I'm sorry.
Hold on, we have to go to...
Yeah. That time, the Board didn't have ample time to review it, they'd just gotten it, and we had put it off for this discussion.
Oh, my bad.
It's actually...
Blighted building draft.
It'll be under the FY15.
Yep, I got you.
And then 819 folder.
I forgot about that. Now, I was, I guess this has been a initiative of the Board for quite some time, I haven't been involved in its, the implementation of the idea. Somebody remind me of why, why do it?
Well, I think it got a new life fairly recently. I think it first started, the discussion first started several years ago, specifically regarding the corner of Waltham and Parker Street, as well as, you know, where Summer Street goes down to the New Bridge and whatever, because at that time, none of that particular property on all four corners, basically, well, the apartment building was being used. And then we had the, the other two sides, the Murphy Building, and then the former...
Samuel's.
Samuel's, that were just sitting there, and, you know, I know that the former administration had some plans about widening the intersection and whatever, and in order to do that, there might have to be some blighted issues. Then it became newly to the fore with recent conversation. I know Jason had an issue within the last month or so about specific buildings that he was, and I think he was more concerned about private buildings than, correct me if I'm wrong.
I think it was also the same corner of Waltham and Parker.
Yeah, in the same, yeah.
Yeah.
Same corner.
So, that's sort of how we got here. It was never, the prior administration never really brought forward anything on it, it was more talk than anything else.
So I think the, the big takeaway, Mr. Chair, is that a mechanism that provides for enforcement beyond what is currently allowed under Mass General law, whether it be through the State Building Code or through the State Sanitary Code, where it gets into very specific, if it's not a condemned building, or if it's not structurally falling in versus, in most cases, a lot of the blight, to some degree, is aesthetic issues, but particularly is a couple of properties focused in the downtown, one being the Murphy Snyder Building, has a gateway to the community that's very visible, has a piece of plywood on, on the, one of the windows now. There's been discussion on what we can do with the River Street project, River Street Dwelling, which is, I think it was five, six, seven unit building there that's been...
The one behind the laundromat?
Yes.
Yeah, vacant for over nine years.
Yeah, I've been in town five years, and it was prior to that, so it's been, been several amount of time. Currently, you know, some of those conditions, there just isn't a mechanism to enforce the property owner under existing Mass General laws to do things. So that, that's really the driver behind it, is if, if we have a local bylaw... So that, that's really the driver behind it, is if, if we have a local bylaw, you know, we can, we can get some action from these property owners.
We also have one on Main Street, right down the street from Town Hall.
But that's not a, so, to clarify, for, I think, well Kevin, you can certainly clarify this. But the original bylaw was very all encompassing.
Yeah.
It was a little bit too big a bite. This one, correct me if I'm wrong, is commercial and multifamily over five?
Correct.
Five or more.
Five or more, okay.
And there are, the, in many cases, five or more is considered commercial.
Commercial anyway.
In, in and of itself, it's not allowed to participate in the curbside trash program. And there's, there's other state codes that five or more units is considered a commercial.
So it's an established threshold, it's not, certainly not arbitrary.
Exactly, and the intent that this was sort of, you know, brought down in scale was, the, the other one had addressed foreclosed properties. And it just, was just way too cumbersome, dealing with single family residential homes and foreclosures and very difficult to grasp. And that, that's why the board didn't move on it prior, is they wanted to kind of dumb it down a little bit and be more focused towards the intent, which is what we just discussed.
And just to also clarify, single family homes are covered under.
Elsewhere.
Building code and elsewhere.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is, this was strictly to try and address some of the commercial building issues we have in town. Especially, you know, we're, we're making a concerted effort for economic development and, and I don't want to say beautification, because that's kind of a. We're looking to market the town, and I think this is kind of another, another prong on that fork, so to speak.
And, so Kevin, can you speak to the requirements for the property owner mandated by this bylaw? I mean, there's some sort of registration?
Yeah.
Things like that? Registration when it's vacant, registration when it's foreclosed?
Mandatory registration is a, it lays out a process for the registration for which the property owner is supposed to follow. I think it deals with ninety days, maybe, something.
Ninety days for vacant and abandoned?
Yeah.
Says like thirty days for foreclosure?
Right.
And what happens if they don't?
Um.
There's a.
There's a penalty.
Or violation of the bylaw.
It allows, I think it allows the twenty-one D non-criminal disposition ticketing perhaps, or violation penalties associated with. I don't know if it's, if they have it listed as a court filing.
Yeah, it's under three.
Yeah, up to three hundred dollars per violation. So that's, that actual threshold is in, is, is in line with the town's twenty-one D non-criminal disposition ticketing for nuisance.
That's a three hundred dollar a day violation?
Up to three hundred dollars per day.
I just have a hard time imagining a foreclosure action where the responsible party even knows enough to respond and.
Yeah.
And us, I don't understand how we would keep them apprised of that. And it just strikes me that, you know, we're just going to be seeing a bunch of these, oh, well, it's been a hundred and eighty days, I just found out. I get whacked three hundred bucks a day for six months? Yeah, I mean, hell, you can't even figure out who the owner is half the time.
Yeah.
Well, I think that, that's a problem.
Doesn't have to be, that doesn't have to be the only, it, it, the thing is, we don't want to limit the town's ability to take action. If that's one of the tools in the toolbox that we can issue tickets, it doesn't have to always be the way. It could be that it's just a court petition, you know, either through housing court or, you know, through some other mechanisms that you can, you can request. You know, to enforce the bylaw as well.
In the definitions section, it defines the enforcement agency as the building commissioner or his or her designee. Does that mean the building commissioner can just name anybody that he, at this point, desires to be an enforcement agent? And should that be more restrictive and come from either the town administrator to name the designee or the board of selectmen to name the designee?
Yeah, I don't think it, I don't think it's anything that should fall into the board of selectmen's realm, personally. Since both the local inspector and the building commissioner are town administrator appointments.
Well, then, then, my, my point is to take away.
Yeah.
The authority from the building commissioner to be able to name a designee.
Yeah, I don't know what the premise behind that is, other than maybe to designate the local inspector who's filling in perhaps. But yeah, we could clean, we could.
I just don't like the language, quite frankly.
Sure. But in all cases, the, the enforcement agent has the ability to, you know, go multiple routes for enforcement. Or at their discretion, you know, use the court system versus twenty-one D or something like that. Which is common in all of our, you know, the other nuisance bylaw sections that allow for enforcement penalties. There's usually, you know, you don't want to take that away from the town where you only have one mechanism to enforce the bylaw.
And Section C one talks about the enforcement agent evaluating all properties in town believed to be vacant or abandoned. Is that a proactive or reactive effort? Does the enforcement agency just kind of wander around and say, man, that looks vacant? Or hey, I should just go check all properties, or is it just in response to?
If that's referring to reoccurring once it's on the, the registration. I think annually it's supposed to be done.
The way it's written, it says believed to be, so that would leave the opinion as to whether or not it's vacant up to the enforcement officer to.
Yeah.
Uh, make a determination.
And then they would, you know, follow through with notice.
And then they, exactly, that's the way, that's the way it reads.
If it goes unnoticed, you know.
Yeah, he's roaming around town theoretically and noticing, or if somebody brings to his attention a building that looks like it's been, you know, disregarded for a while.
Yeah, since we don't, I mean, this is a common, in, in cities or other where they have a code enforcement department, that's their job, that's what they do. They're actively out there being proactive and they have full-time code enforcement officers that are dealing with blighted properties and nuisance issues. Unfortunately for Maynard, because of staffing levels, most of this stuff is reactive. So, you know, we're, we're following up on a case because we either heard about a property that's in dire, you know, disrepair, or it's a direct complaint from an abutter, a neighbor, whoever, and that's the more common. I think it's just kind of general, in the sense that, you know, it would, it would be proactive and responsive.
So, I think I agree with David's point about clarifying the language regarding the designees or inspections. Also, I have a, I don't know, I'm a little stuck on the practicalities of notification and the, and the levying of multiple daily fines. The other members of the board, you okay with the way it's written, or is there something else we could do with that?
I honestly, I generally don't have an issue. I, I think that if we don't know who an owner of a building is and we can't notify them, I, I have more of an issue with that. That we have no records and no way to contact, you know, if that building burned down tomorrow, who's responsible? Who do you, who's responsible for it? Is it just going to sit there as a pile of smoking ash for five years until we track down somebody who lives in Arizona who doesn't know they own a building in Maynard? I have more of an issue with that than I do with leveling a penalty of three hundred dollars a day. You can waive the penalty. You could, you could, there are other routes, as Kevin pointed out, there's, we have somewhat limited recourse on some of these issues.
All right, so you're confident that there's a practical and realistic method of waiving the penalties? Cause I can just see that guy in Arizona finding out four years after we declared it vacant that he has three hundred bucks a day.
I mean, it has nothing to do with the town, in the sense that if you issued a penalty, the only recourse for not, not receiving the check for three hundred dollars is to file it in court either way. At that time in court, you can withdraw it, or they can show up and plead their case. Most of the time, you know, you could have a thousand dollars in twenty-one D criminal disposition tickets. Eight times out of ten, the clerk magistrate dismisses all of them and just says you need to correct it. It's really to get them there and, and achieve the ultimate goal, which is compliance. Very rarely do they actually make them pay it. And sometimes they, you know, if they have six or seven tickets, they might make them pay one. But it's, it's just another mechanism that is consistent with our own twenty-one D bylaw, which allows for non-criminal disposition. So it's no different than if somebody dumped X into, you know, a public property or, you know, their property and we issued a twenty-one D ticket for it. It's the same, it's three hundred dollars per, up to three hundred dollars per day per violation.
Can, can you speak to category, for lack of a better term, H, under appeals, specifically regarding. Bill's point? Is that appeal for the dollar amount? Is that appeal for the, the fact that the building has been declared abandoned?
It's, the appeal is, is for the notice. We have the same, we have the same current appeal process in, if the building commissioner issues a, under the current nuisance requirements, issues an enforcement order, they still have the same twenty-one day appeal process to the board of selectmen. In fact, we've dealt with it several years ago on Martin Street. There's been a few around town, Bill may remember someone because they're probably six plus years.
I did Martin Street.
Okay, so that.
That was several years ago.
That's the same, that's the same appeal mechanism that if the building commissioner issues a enforcement order under our zoning, under our bylaws for nuisance, it's the same process, it's just mimicking it.
So the enforcement agent issues some type of statement saying, and you have twenty-one days to appeal that statement?
Correct. You come in and bring your own pitches and plead your case as to why you don't think it is in violation of our bylaw. And then the, the board can overturn that enforcement one.
But that does not address Bill's point of the three hundred dollars, or I guess it was Jason's point of waiving the three hundred dollars. The board of selectmen does or does not have the authority to waive the three hundred dollars?
Well, they, they do by not upholding the order. So if, in essence, if, if the, if the order is deemed, you know, at, at a, at an appeal hearing, is deemed that it's not, you know, for whatever reason, then, then the actual citations would be, if they're filed. Right now, the way a twenty-one D ticket works is there's no action, other than a piece of paper that sits in a file until that individual makes an issue of it. And what brings it, and when I say makes an issue of it, files it with the court. If that action doesn't happen, it's no more than just a piece of paper that doesn't show as if it ever existed. It's not, it's not like, it's not like tied with the RMV or if the issue speeding violations and things like that, it's into the system. This only enters into the court's radar when the town takes action. So there's two options, the town could say, you know, and again, it would be more than the twenty-one days. So they've either, they've gone past the appeal process and the town now has the ability to, there wouldn't be any tickets prior to the twenty-one days.
And apologies to all in the room, but I just realized this is actually a planning board article.
Yeah, I don't know why that.
And it's not a board of selectmen article.
Uh, that should be board of selectmen insofar as, yeah.
So we should be talking about it.
Yeah, and, and same with the presenter, it always was.
It's a little, it's a little late now. Can't un-talk about it.
We can refer it down to them if you, if you prefer. I think it's just an oversight on the listing.
All right, so my suggestion is that, we set this as Control B, but you come back to us with some tweaking of the designee text? Sounds like in general, everything else is pretty much okay and.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's pretty basic and easy to do. Again, since the building commissioner is an appointed official of the town administrator, I would think.
I'd be fine with, I'd be fine with the line, I just don't want it to be his designee.
Yeah, or designee of the town administrator's office.
Correct, yeah.
That, that one's pretty straightforward.
Right.
We're just a building inspector, if he's not there, nobody else does it, but that's okay.
Yeah, all right, yeah. You can remove that altogether.
All right, so we all set, that is Control B?
Yep.
All righty. What else you got in your pile of tricks?
Um, what else do we have?
I mean, we have the two planning board things, looks like they're pretty far along.
You've seen those articles, at least the supermarket one, right?
So, any idea when they'll be ready?
Yeah, um.
Just for coordinating with income and stuff?
The planning board?
Their hearing is the.
Next week.
The first one, the twenty-third, for the one from Jean's Inn.
Acton Street is on the twenty-third. The supermarket hearing is September ninth.
All right, so theoretically, the, if they close and decide, we could have the article on the, the article about the supermarket available for acceptance on the sixteenth, right?
Yes.
But the article on Acton Street.
I don't see the language.
Won't be ready until the clothes are worn. Okay. So that brings us.
Yeah.
To the logistical stuff.
Both, both articles are in draft form currently, I don't anticipate changing much, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it just brings us to logistics of approving the warrant and doing the final acceptance of articles.
Right.
But before we talk about that, let's, let's plug on, how about the prior year bill, when's that going to be ready?
Uh, that is ready, we can send that to the board. That's dealing with a, a prior year legal bill that's over the course of, I think, two. Started in two thousand thirteen and in fourteen, FY thirteen and FY fourteen. That was dealing with some research that my predecessor had initiated, and I think part of the direction from the board with regards to Rockland Ave and some prior year, some land, it was for our land, yeah, exactly.
For some potential rezoning, for some, looking at some potential rezoning.
Yeah, it is, there was a significant amount of deed research that was required by council. And it got pretty lengthy, and how, how far back, there's a whole requirement that they have to give notice. And it was a significant amount of work dedicated to giving the notice. And it ended up being somewhere in the sums of just over nineteen thousand dollars in legal work that was done. And of course, Peter Brown and his firm are looking to get paid on it. They've been sitting on it, the reason they sat on it was there was going to be some action to potentially auction off Rockland Ave. The proceeds for that would have covered the cost of the legal, and we haven't, you know, we haven't done that. So they're looking to get paid at this point.
So what's this, do we have all of that product, that research?
We do.
Okay.
The only piece that we don't have was the actual survey that was supposed to be done. I believe Mike used Acton survey and they hadn't surveyed the wrong property. So we would have to resurvey it, but all of the, the legal notice, all that work has all been done.
We have all the records we need now to go forward, should something?
Yeah, the only.
Should somebody else come in and want to do that, we don't have to do this again, we're done? We have all the deed research?
We have all of that research.
I guess I just want to make sure we have all the product from this endeavor.
Yeah, the, the last piece would be, so, I mean, if we were to say tomorrow, we're going to, we're going to auction, we're going to hold a public auction, the last piece we would have to do is, is actually do a survey. Is there's still a lot of uncertainty with, with that as well, but yeah.
Did we pay for the previous inadequate survey?
Yeah, I think they already paid that out of something else. This is just with regards to D'Ambrosio Brown.
Okay, that's fine.
Peter Brown's legal work.
So, I gotta go off, I gotta go off on tangent a little bit here. I mean, we're talking the old house. So, I gotta go off on a tangent a little bit here. I mean, we're talking the old house on Rockland Ave, is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Um, 'cause that relates to a question I had on the zoning petition for the Fenton property.
Yeah.
Is that the only area that would want to be rezoned?
We talked about that. We have been talking about that for a few months, potentially of, of that, um, that parcel, we would have to, we'd have to divide and carve, we were talking about being able to carve off a piece, a few acres potentially, um, that we could go to, you know, to carve off as residential and the rest the town would hold on to for future, uh.
But, but for rezoning, zoning doesn't need property lines. Zoning just cut through a piece of property.
Yeah.
And so.
It's all one parcel.
I know, but the zoning could cut it in half and allow the southern part of it to be one thing and the northern part to stay the same. So my question is, if there's gonna be discussion on rezoning of property up there, do we want to include that property?
We've talked about it. I mean, I think it has more value. I guess the question is, you know, the ultimate goal of the town to tear that down and hold on to it as a potential piece of property that we may wanna utilize in conjunction with, um, the rail trail and, and the golf course and some other aspects that looks good, which would not necessarily fit in line with having to do a zoning change. Versus if we auction it off, it's more desirable as changing the zone into residential. It would be more desirable. There's no, there's no commercial industrial interest there. Even less for our property, which has no frontage on, uh, 27.
One of the factors we considered is that because of town wells and wetlands, the developable portion of that parcel.
There's only a few acres.
Is less than five acres. We didn't have it surveyed, but, um, a reasonable estimate is about three and a half to four acres is developed.
Yeah, if you're lucky, yeah.
So with that in mind, you know, a lot of people look at that parcel going, I think it's 23 acres or something. But it's not really a nice big open parcel. You can do whatever the heck you want with it.
Aside from whether the town holds on to the property or auctions the property, something needs to be done about the structure that's there. It's gotta come down at some point in the near future, um, for many reasons. But we, you know, there's, we've discussed with the, with the fire chief about doing a controlled burn training exercise. I think that might even come before the board potentially. Um, and he's still interested in doing that, but there is a cost that, you know, that we would have to allocate to be able to fund the, uh, the cleanup of it. We can't just leave a controlled burn site. So, but, you know, it could be that we, we do something like that.
That's back to Jason's point. You've had it for five years smoldering.
We raise the structure and it just stays vacant until the town figures out really what our best bet is. We've started looking at it. It's just one of those things that's, it's, it's been on our radar. I say, hey, you know, might be a good opportunity. We try to auction. We looked at it when we did the last auction and we just didn't have enough time. And the same with this case is it's definitely more valuable for an auction if we were to rezone it for residential.
That was one of the other places too, to Jack McKeen's point from earlier, that the veterans housing looked at. Is that correct?
Yes, 'cause it was already town-owned.
Yeah. Gradually we're reducing.
Well, I mean, all right, so we'll have to talk about that later. I mean, Mike, the reason I bring up the query of other parcels to be, uh, rezoned is I was noticing that the zoning includes a couple other residential properties on that side of Acton Street that are industrial zone. And I'm kinda wondering why we just don't clean up the, that side of Acton Street and put it all back to rez. If they're gonna consider one piece. Seems kinda weird, 'cause there's at least one and a half residential properties that are also industrial zone and.
Beyond the state police building?
Um, well, that's, I'm talking about the, the east side of Acton Street. So it's the state police triangle park and then the two houses south of that.
Yeah. Yeah, and then Marble Farm. Yeah, okay.
Not Marble Farm, the two houses south.
On the other side of the street from Marble Farm.
Correct, on the other side of the street of Marble Farm. And so they would just be orphaned little industrial zones that have non-conforming uses if we don't just rezone the whole damn thing. And I note that one's for sale and I don't know how the heck they're gonna, you know, probably can't even rebuild in an industrial zone, so.
Do you incur cost in surveying to affect that rezon?
I doubt it, 'cause the rezon doesn't look like it was a surveyed zone.
It's changing, it's changing it on the map.
I mean, you're changing the boundaries and you define the boundaries as east of Acton Street, I think, effectively would do it in this case. I don't, I mean, it's not really an issue.
No, it's a fair point.
Not really an issue for us, but it just.
We definitely talked about it.
Just look at the map and it looked like it would be a funny little hole.
Yeah, and then even on Rockland Ave, I mean, you get all those residential and then.
Yeah, you know, Rockland Ave, I'm less excited about that, 'cause I don't really wanna pay for the road, you know, but the other stuff is established roads with housing been there for a long time and it's kinda weird, but, I don't know, just a, just a random thought. So getting back to the point, prior year bill, how much roughly?
Uh, it's a little over nineteen.
And the town accountant's recommendation for, uh, funding source will be what?
Um.
It needs that, right, when it comes to us?
Yeah, it does.
Needs to go to FinCom with a funding source.
Well, the.
Yeah, I'll have to look at it. I don't know if he actually put it as that. Yeah, I don't have that one.
I mean, I don't mind if they work it out with FinCom, but.
FinCom's already aware of it, um, 'cause it was actually put in to encumber some money from, uh, from somewhere else to pay it and that's when it was a prior year issue. So they're aware of it, um, they're aware of the dollar amount. It's already been before them indirectly.
Okay.
Um, and the funding source has already been identified. I think it may, it may have been use of free cash, but I have it.
Yeah, but we're, our, so can we expect it by our next meeting on the 16th to be in final form so we can
Yes.
accept it and send it over to FinCom?
Yes.
On the golf course contract? That sounds like an easy thing to write. You done yet?
That's done, yeah.
Pete, I've actually written three articles, um, and then, um, you asked me last week to make sure we brought them as a summary. And, uh, Becky and I put together this, uh, grid that doesn't have the full language on it. That was my misunderstanding of what you were looking for me to provide you. So you've seen the, the draft articles, but the other two gentlemen have not.
I have.
And you responded to me and asked me to put them all on one page. And that's how this came.
Oh, oh, a little paragraph. Oh, yeah, yeah, all right. I mean, I didn't really recognize those as articles, but those are more like article ideas, but, okay.
But they were in the article language.
I see. Good point. Um.
So it's, I can, I don't have them with me, but I can provide them to you if you want them now.
Yeah.
Only if they're good. I would rather see them in sort of a actual form.
Yeah, I mean, a golf course contract sounds like it's gonna be pretty complex article? No? I mean, 'cause there's all these caveats and now you're, you're putting in all the reuse.
The con, the articles.
Isn't the article just to authorize us to proceed to?
Board of Selectmen to authorize a town administrator to enter into a contract of anywhere from three to 10 years, essentially.
That's right.
It allows us, we can't even put an RFP out there until town meeting is approved, um, you know, entering into a contract more than three years. So the, the idea was if, you know, whether we enter in a three-year contract with two one-year extensions or a five-year contract, it's more, uh, appealable to, you know.
We had similar warrant, also the spring town meeting for the IT contract.
Yeah.
So you can write that one.
But the details of, of, you know, who's pays for what bathroom renovation and how much is gonna be paid.
All that's, all that's the actual RFP.
Yeah, and it's RFP, but that's out of town meetings.
Town meeting, good.
You can't even write that until they give us permission to write it for more than three years.
The selectmen approve that contract. Anyway.
And so the promises of compatible reuse and all that stuff, town meeting will just have to go on our word? Letter's gonna be included?
They're not authoring, uh, authorizing us to sign a contract. So when the contract gets negotiated through the RFP process, if the board is unhappy with it, they don't sign it.
And the RFP, we, we set the, the scope of the RFP, so part of what our scope would be is that this area is dedicated as COA and the responder would, would be aware of that.
But that's an intent, not a commitment. When we talk to town meeting, explain to the meeting why we want them to give us permission, we're saying that's our intent, but we can't promise them that that will happen.
The intent of that.
All we can promise them is we may have a 10-year contract.
No, it can be, it can, it will be a mandatory condition of any, of any contract.
I don't think the article wording has that.
No, it doesn't deal with the contract's wording.
I don't know that the article wording.
Just allows us to enter into an agreement. It's the same thing. Town meeting didn't, didn't spec, doesn't dictate anything to do with the trash contract. But in order to put it, to get a trash contract out there, um, we needed the town meeting to approve to enter into a five-year agreement.
Yeah, I, I, I'm on board with what you're saying.
Of which we ended up saving significantly.
We could write an RFP for three years today without any town meeting involvement. And you may or may not like the agreement that comes forward.
Yep.
That article's gonna be very basic. It's gonna be specific, just like the, the article for the, uh, reverse nine-one-one system.
So the board members have.
Or similar to the article for trash, right? If, if we need, yeah.
Trash, IT services.
The board, are the board members okay with the term, five to 10 years?
It's from, it says from more than three, not to exceed 10.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, 10 seems a little long to me.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I'm comfortable asking town meeting for a 10-year contract.
Sure.
But, I don't know, what are you gonna, Jason, you okay? Three to 10? Does that work for you?
Does shortening that to five? I, I can see, I can see wanting more than three.
Sure.
But, yeah, 10, and I'm probably coming at this from a different angle, as far as the golf course is concerned. You know, I don't necessarily know that I wanna see the town paying for a golf course for 10 years. And if we're locked into a 10-year contract.
Yeah, that's fair enough. None of us in this room would be advocating a 10-year contract, but I, I get what you're saying.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying, if, I mean.
Gives the flexibility.
Town meeting, uh, members may not be aware of that. The other, as we're talking through it, I can see it being a bit of a hiccup for, potentially for FinCom too.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
It probably is better.
Is it a five-five?
Five to, what's that?
Is it possible to ask for a five-five authorization? A five-year and a five-year renewal?
The intention of the extension is to give you the flexibility. And, uh, you had asked that question last week. I don't know if you saw my response, but, the original intention, uh, of the RFP would be to go for five years with renewables at the town's discretion. So if things are going along well and everyone's happy with the terms, we could extend it out for, say, two more years or five more years, whatever. But the total length of the contract couldn't exceed the 10. But without that flexibility, if you go to town meeting and say more than three years, but not more than five, if you're as happy where we are, five years from now, we're gonna have to go.
It's similar to the current, I mean, if we had an engineer, you know, well, they're exempt under something, but if you had a contract that's, you know, three years, we can never, we couldn't even do a three-year with two one-year renewals, 'cause that in essence could be a five-year contract.
Right, okay, and that, that makes it.
Flexibility to be able to say whether it's three, five, seven, we have the town's discretion to keep extending it without having to go back through this process again.
The intention of the RFP is to structure the request for the proposal, so that what comes back to us is a golf course management company saying, if I can have a contract for this many years, here's how much you're gonna make from that. And if they find it to be more advantageous than to have a six-year or seven-year horizon, that'll be where we get the most money. If we say it's five years, then all their calculus is gonna be focused on that one deadline.
Okay, I, I think that's fair, what you've just explained. I think we may wanna clarify that, that would be base contract and option years, year or option contract. I, I think there could be an ex, a little bit more of an explanation.
So more than three years with the options to extend up to 10, something like that?
Yeah, that's, I mean, from what you.
If we said nine, would that be more palatable as 10, sort of the number that's jumping off the page?
No, I think, I, I'm, you know.
Problem is they think.
I understand your, I understand your point. I, I think it's the sale to town.
I'm not arguing. I wanna know.
No, no, I understand. I, I think it's the sale to town meeting is the, is the problem, 'cause people hear a 10-year contract. And even though it's not the intention to enter into a 10-year contract, people hear that and might be apt to say, you know, that's really restricting the town's opportunities for that property for 10 years. But that's not what we're doing in reality. It's, um, so, it's, it's really in the presentation from my perspective, the presentation to town meeting as to how it's, how it's sold, how it's explained. But we really have to have an understanding of it in order to properly sell it to town meeting. Kevin, these are on the table. I don't know what they are, the checks underneath and everything else.
So, so it says for more than three years with the town's discretion to extend the contract? If it's in their best interest, something like that?
That is, yeah, it's, um, you know, from a sports analogy, you know, you have a, you have a three-year contract with a two-year club option.
That's right.
You know, that's basically what it is. The option of the town to continue that contract. It's not a player option, it's a, a team option.
Right.
So.
The next one I can see coming to this is gonna be the wastewater treatment plan. You know, it's more favorable for the town interns to longer-term contracts. You get better rates and better deals, assuming that, you know, you have provisions for the town not to extend and, and some other, but five versus three can really be a big difference.
Yeah, I got no problem with the five-three. I mean, but to Jason's point, you know, the town is not on board with keeping it as a golf course for 10 years. The wastewater treatment plan, we're gonna keep it for 10 years.
Yeah, we'll probably hang on to that. But, yeah, no, I mean, to David, you know, David's point, you got, you basically just pulled me right in on that, which was, you said three to 10 years, and my first thought was, we're gonna sign a contract for 10 years. Not, we're going to sign a five-year contract with a five-year option or.
We don't know what we're gonna sign.
Right, it's just a matter, I, I think, but to David's point.
We might sign a three-year and be finally happy with that.
Right, but to David's point, the language that you guys just brought up, I think you wanna explain that it's, you know, contract and options up to 10 years.
We're just not gonna be able, we're just not gonna be able to specifically state our intent, which is we're looking to do a five-year contract with two one-year renewals
No.
or a three-year with two, you know, we don't know what that's gonna play out.
We wanna give the town the most flexibility possible.
But I think we can work it.
And we know that in order to attract, and this, I'm sort of selling it to town meeting right now, but in order, in order to attract bidders, it's gotta be three years at a minimum. Preferably five years is better for them, but if we are given the opportunity to make it at least a three-year contract with the opportunity to have options on the part of the town that could go out as far as 10 years, that's what we're looking for. But keep in mind that if, if after five years or after three years, we say, you know what, we've made a different, we're going in a different direction now, we have the right, it's at our option, we have the right to stop it at that point. Just like if it goes three years, okay, it's our option now to extend it for another two, three years, depending on what, what our intentions are as a town at that point. So we have more options there. And the next time it will have to go to town meeting presumably is in 10 years, unless we decide to do something different before that.
I'd say, forgive me if I'm wrong here, and to, to Bill and David, I, I think we're all on the same page here. It, it's just a matter of the language and how it's presented at town meeting.
Yeah, how it's presented.
And I, oh, go ahead.
I'm curious how it's presented or, or how the exact language.
Oh, I think it's the length.
'Cause I'm confused whether it's practical to cite a five-year base term in the article language.
Say that again?
Can we cite the length of the base term in the article?
We can.
Do, do we want to?
I think, um, anything more specific is good. If we, if we pretty much know we're gonna ask for a minimum of a five-year contract, it's to our advantage to just say that. I, I don't see, um, I don't see us getting a better deal at less than five years. You know, a four-year deal might be better than a three-year deal, but the five-year deal should be better than the four-year. So really the conversation is, does the town see realistically the use of that space changing dramatically in the next five years at the town's discretion? And if the answer to that is no, let's play it out for five more years.
So the article would, would read authorize.
The way, the current language, let me read it, says to see if the town. The way, the current language, let me read it, says, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the town administrator with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to enter and, enter into a contract with the most appropriate vendor in respect to mained municipal golf course management through an equitable and fair process for more than three years but not greater than ten."
And we change it to a base term of, for more than three and not to five with a-
Not greater than-
Dual options up to an additional five or, I don't know, something like that?
Yeah, I'm gonna look at that.
Yeah.
Does that give you guys the flexibility you need?
Yeah.
To kind of market this thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good.
All right, I like that.
Three to five years with renewals up to ten, some nicer language.
Yeah, and the intro, that's just, sounds just fine.
Good.
Yeah.
All the fair and equitable process and all that.
Yeah, it's just the set stuff. It's a, yeah, classier way of saying we'll follow thirty B requirements, essentially.
Yeah, we go classy, so that's it.
Um-
Five plus five.
The other one was the COA capital reallocation. Looking to, see if the town will vote to authorize the reallocation of, um, somewhere, probably seventy-five thousand, that, we get a better number, from the- Uh-huh?
Seven, seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, we're looking to, no, the reallocation of seventy-five thousand from the annual town meeting twenty thirteen article with the number, "For the purpose of providing renovations and improvements at the mained municipal golf course clubhouse so that the council and aging office and services may be provided from that location." Essentially, this is, the language isn't really gonna change, it's just a matter of the funding source. And what we're proposing to do is, what's that?
In the amount.
In the amount, yeah. But what we're looking to do is reallocate a previously allocated article for, um, from free cash at the annual town meeting in thirteen, uh, for, it, the article was for eight hundred and fifty thousand.
What was that article for?
Uh, the school department roofs.
So, are you recommending action on the rest of that seven fifty?
We will be.
As part of this article, are we just gonna park it in stabilization or something?
Uh, no, they'll, that's where the, uh, reallocation of, is that the reallocation of free cash?
They're different things, it's different money pots here.
No.
So, we got an article, we got an old article authorization-
Yeah.
That is gonna hang out there forever unless we act on it.
Correct, what I would do is-
You're saying rather than just close it and put the money back in the bank, we spend seventy-five grand on the council and aging. I'm pretty sure the board's psyched about that.
Maybe some other things, I haven't seen that yet.
So there, there were two issues in developing the language on this because there's other capital, uh, requests coming forth that we'd like to see acted on for fall town meeting. And, um, we have this relatively large bucket of money, we just discussed the seven fifty thousand. But we also have, um, other money available in the town. So, do we wanna use, say, capital stabilization? Or do we wanna just reallocate this?
My preference personally would be to reallocate the seven hundred and fifty, take care of the projects that we're comfortable with knowing that we need to, um, to, to address in the fall. And if there's any remaining balance, we just park it all in capital stabilization out of the seven fifty. And then that's not touching any of FY fourteen certified free cash, and it's not dipping into-
My preference is-
Stabilization.
Is, close the article, fund the COA. I'm not sure about other capital, because to me, the other capital items are still incomplete. And I'm not confident that we're not just addressing squeaky wheels. So, I'm not sold on that yet, but I wanna close that article. If the article is, the money is floating out there and the bills are all paid and there's money left over, let's close out that article.
Isn't it supposed to close automatically within two years anyway, or something along those lines, if it's not paid?
Yeah.
Which would be in May.
Is that true?
Yes.
It doesn't happen.
Well, I know it doesn't happen, but it's supposed to-
Mike Luza has told me this about three hundred times in the past month.
That's an argument that comes up from residents all the time.
Financial policy that says-
That it's supposed to close out and revert back, revert back to free cash, right?
Yeah.
Well, revert back to the general fund.
Whatever it was from. So we, we have, we have a number of articles that are dead, that we, we can't, you know, we have to spend the money.
Well, that one would be particularly difficult because we don't want it to revert back to fiscal twelve free cash. So it's way cleaner if we just close this one accurately.
What would happen is if you have an article, you close it out, it would all close out to that, that year's free cash that you closed it out in. Unless you reallocate it to something else. So if you close it, we did nothing at all, seven hundred and fifty thousand would hit our next free cash certification.
But my point is, we, we can park it now instead of waiting a year and a half for free cash.
That was my point. But take care of what we wanna address, park the rest in capital stabilization of the balance. And then at least it's, it's there, I think makes the most sense. Yeah, I don't know on the other capital items, I mean.
But you got, you guys wanna close out that article, or you wanna-
What's the action necessary, what's the necessary action that blows it out? That's done, that's done outside of here.
No, it's a town meeting article, well-
Yeah.
In this case, the money can't automatically go back to where it came from, because it came from old free cash. So we would have to, the article would have to state where all the monies go to, you know, it's like, close out this article, seven fifty, and you move seventy-five to council and aging, and X to this and Y to that.
Exactly, it's one, the other, you know, the other thing that-
So if we close it, excuse me, but if we close it out, are you suggesting we then have line items as to where they go or just dump it into one bucket?
My, my current-
We know that seventy-five is gonna go-
My current preference is two buckets, council and aging, and then the rest goes back, because I don't know that we have enough information on all this stuff.
Gotcha, okay, I fully understand.
I'm willing to learn.
I understand.
I think there's justification, we, just kinda tying into the FY fifteen, there needs to be just some decisions made on a couple of things. One, where we're gonna fund FY fourteen increases for salaries that are dealing with CBAs. The other, so taking aside the capital, that's one discussion, there's other things that need to be paid for. The other being-
Well, we could also have special counsel paid out of that too, presumably.
The other one is the special counsel, is the legal, so, there are a couple of options we could pay for that, or we could, um, you know, we could justify that one from a capital, you know, from a FinCom reserve fund.
Well, I don't wanna muck up the capital on the operating item discussions.
That's a good point, too.
Well, some of them are one-time money, so I think-
Yeah, yeah, all right, some of them are.
So free cash, I, I don't think is in it, so my point is to, to fifty thousand dollars to a special counsel bucket is in essence a one-time money. Assuming that the project at its far is gone, and, so I think that could be justified. The only other alternative to that would be to go to FinCom sometime in the near future and say, hey, this, you know, we're in a deficit spending on that line item because it didn't exist.
Yeah, and I wouldn't, I would wanna pay for it as soon as possible and tell town meeting why they're paying for it.
Yeah, so that, that one I would like to add in there, the legal costs.
For the, in the seven fifty?
Yeah.
You're talking about?
Yeah, because it's free cash money, it's not capital money. It's free, it's just free cash money.
I got you.
What, other projects, you know, that just come to mind that are, not a capital discussion, but, you know, if we were to look at potentially funding a, uh, business marketing consultant, which is part of what we discussed with, uh, kind of the long-term, two, one, two, three-year process with Eric Wing when he was in, you know, um, I don't know.
That strikes me as something that's not-
Yeah.
Can't really vet that in time for the town meeting board in three weeks.
He submitted a proposal-
We have an idea of the number.
Have to be an RFP based on the value of it.
Yeah.
And, um, I think there's a lot, there's a lot of stuff to be worked out on that. I would agree, it's not something that we wanna just sort of park some money in and hope that we work out the details. I also still feel like the whole thing could be funded through the business community. We may need to, to kick in some, some of that startup money, but, but I don't see it being a long-term commitment from the town, so I think it does require more than a-
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, my concern with those is always, you know, expectations of product at the end is never quite what we anticipated in the beginning, because we tended to do it too quick, but. All right, what, what are the ideas you got for one time?
Those are the two big ones, aside from capital stuff.
Do you think special counsel's in the, in the range of fifty K?
I really don't know. It gets into a point too, at some point-
We know what it is today, right?
Yeah, we've, yeah, we've paid like one invoice. Because it's not, I mean, it's, it's per hour and, um, you know, it, it's all over the place. It's been controlled, I mean, it hasn't been outrageous, but at any, anything that's a hundred and ninety dollars an hour is gonna add up pretty quickly.
And it stops or at least slows considerably if they actually file.
Yeah, yeah. And we can, you know, with-
Although it probably doesn't help us on the forty B stuff.
Forty B we would still need, correct.
Remind me of the technical verbiage of referring to it, have they filed a forty B, submitted a letter of intent? Whatever the hell they, what, what do you call it that they sent to the state?
The-
They filed with Mass Housing.
Yeah, they did, yeah, it was an application for, uh, what it's, yeah.
Submitted an application, so. The forty B special counsel is, yeah, I got you, all right.
And until there's an application and a project, the developer's not paying for any of the other stuff. So if we have these meetings with, in-
But would they pay in the forty B process, would they pay that?
No.
But in the other processes, I got you. I got you.
So I can try to get a better sense of what we think, you know, what that budget may look like, but, you know, it's more than what we, we have available.
So, you guys okay with special counsel one-time funding coming from the seven hundred and fifty thousand article?
Yeah, I have no issue with that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay. And then where, and if you were to park the rest of it, where would you park it?
Capital stabilization.
What are other, other choices?
OPEB.
Oh, that's right.
How much are we required to put in OPEB at this point?
Six million.
No, is it like, this, is there an annual?
Yeah.
That, what's the annual that we have not, are we up to date with what we have to?
Right now, we're doing pay-as-you-go, our, our-
With a super balloon.
Our commitment-
We understand that, but that's like, you know, I realize it's-
Well, our commitment is close to four million, our actual is one and a half million.
Yeah.
So, but we should be-
Well, that's closer than I thought.
Right, we should be putting in the four.
We're doing a heck of a lot better than some other communities on this.
Heck of a lot worse, too.
That, that's not gonna matter much when they, you know, when we have to start putting in six.
I understand, but there's no comparison.
It's really gonna start to eat into the budget in the next few years.
There's some that have completely funded communities and others that haven't even set up a trust.
Yeah, that's the point.
There's a, all over the spectrum, including the state, who has yet to address it themselves.
It'll change with the, the legislature will change it when it becomes evident that the state's gonna go bust.
The other thing, I don't know, and we really haven't come back to the fire department or fire station discussion, but there was a request to potentially, uh, fund an actual paid individual. If we, in the sense of an architect or somebody to be involved with the committee, and that would be another source of funds that would be needed, um, associated with that. I don't know if Tony's giving you any, the chief's giving you any indication on what, twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars, I think it was?
I don't recall it, but we brought that up when we did the capital presentation, that was one of the recommendations of the committee to create a building committee with an independent, uh, facilitator.
It might be premature at this point, but it may be something that in the spring they'd be asking for, um, funding for.
I mean, I'll leave that up to you guys, because I mean, I, I think the whole issue of trying to work out a design for a fire station is premature.
Well, I, I don't think-
The concept of, you know, do it now and it'll be good when we're ready fails me, because we've done it before, and why isn't the old one ready?
And, and more so, um, I think the idea of really looking at the option of what's available in the current location and neighboring properties and everything else, I don't know if it's been fully vetted. And, you know, for years we were told the police station would never work, the police station would never work, the police station would never work. And once people got together and realized that it could work, it did work. And I don't know if we've done the same, all I've ever heard is, we cannot make it work at the fire station. And I think we should explore that a little bit more.
We also haven't established a building committee-
True.
To explore some of those-
True.
Issues, which has been a request.
But, and that's, and that's one of the concerns with the building committee, is I don't want the focus to immediately be on a brand-new facility. And I've already heard that. And I'm not hearing the alternative of, and that's a concern. We can't, you know, you create a committee, you can't have the committee created. If it's gonna be a brand-new building committee, that's one thing. If it's gonna be an exploratory committee for options, that's another thing. If it's going to be a reuse committee, that's a third thing. So we have to establish or have a conversation here as to what it is that we want to even have on the table.
Yeah, I, I think it warrants having the chief back in.
Well, we know what the chief's position is, he's made that clear.
I thought we already authorized the building committee.
I don't know if we authorized a building committee, I think we had the discussion about whether or not it was something we wanted to implement. I don't recall authorizing the building committee.
You have to point to.
Huh?
Oh, yeah, we haven't done that yet.
I know we haven't pointed it, but I thought we already authorized you maybe to do it.
No.
No, I don't, I don't think so. We had a discussion about it, for sure.
I got you. All right, so it sounds like that's not gonna be ready for prime time for the special. Coolage?
Coolage?
You figured out money, we don't need cash for coolage?
June ice.
No, okay.
The superintendent agrees with the assessment-
Oh, that's what you're talking about, yeah.
From our facilities manager of the, uh, on the plan to protect the building for the foreseeable winter into the spring, um, and has agreed to bear the cost, if any, of the school's existing budget, because the budget was formulated, they expected to be in the building for a full year. So he, he feels he has the costs or the money available. The facilities manager estimated it to be below ten thousand dollars, and he's got a whole list of-
Just to protect the envelope?
The heating system taking it down, so it's, it's not gonna freeze the pipes, that sort of stuff fill the pipes with lycall, that's the kind of the biggest expense, it's only a few thousand dollars. And then security issues. There will be some unknown utility costs, they would like to have, uh, motion lights inside the building as well as exterior lighting.
So-
But how about, how about the roof, though, isn't the roof in need of severe patching or whatever to prevent it from?
They, they know what the problems are with it today, and they would have a, um, I don't know what the schedule would be, but their existing custodial staff monitors the leaks now and will continue to do that after the building's closed. So if, if there's a rainstorm or whatever, he's gonna be in there every day, every three days, whatever the schedule is, we'll be checking to make sure that they're ahead of any issues like that. That's their plan, in terms of the costs, uh, the schools and the facilities manager agree it's, you know, something, let's say, five to ten thousand dollars.
Bill had expressed, I don't know-
Okay.
And that, what about the upfitting cost for-
I don't know what, with what authority you expressed it, but you, you know, I take your, your comments. I thought at one point you said that you thought we had to basically take care of the roof immediately. It's actually, I mean-
Yeah, I mean, I-
I don't have a full understanding really what the reality is of the condition, I don't know.
But we have facilities manager reporting, we have school administration commitment, right?
Yeah, I do.
My, my concern is, is, um, you know, getting it through the winter is one thing, but is there something we can do to mothball it for a year or two?
The, uh, the process for the heating system is as long as you want it to be like that. The process for the heating system is as long as you want it to be like that. The other things, I think there would be different recommendations if you knew it was going to be more years. Certainly, the roof needs more addressing. There's lots of reports about loose flashing, gutters, things like that. We may want to spend some money to sort of batten down those hatches, so to speak. But if the decision over the winter is to dispose of the property, as we heard from Jeff McKean tonight, we go to Springtown meeting, authorize that, put out an RFP, have some company come in and buy it, turn it into condominiums or whatever, why would we want to put more money into that permanent stuff? And if in the winter we say we're gonna keep it longer, then maybe we appropriate, you know, ten or twenty or thirty thousand to that better battening down.
Or maybe we keep a little extra, there's no harm in keeping a little extra in the already allocated article for roof repairs. You know, if instead of being seven fifty, it's seven hundred, you know, and the only thing that happens at that is come spring, if there's eighty thousand dollars left and it gets closed out and it closes out to free cash. You know, there's no real detriment by us not closing the entire pot out. So maybe, you know, if we look at how that article's worded, there could be some-
Is that article for Coolage Roof?
No, I think it just says roofing repairs for the school.
That was for, I think Green Meadow.
Oh, yeah, I don't think it's, because I guess I'm fine with the way you explain it. I mean, we keep it going till Springtown meeting, and if we have to do something, then we'll do something then.
Yeah, but we can't let it fall off the radar. That's the big thing.
I believe the schools intend to give the property to the town at some point, and that requires some sort of active process. I don't know what all the legal ins and outs are of it, but the superintendent has made some sort of comment to that effect. So if they come here in December or January and say, you know, here's the deed, or here's the title, or however that process works, that might force the issue of that conversation. Certainly won't fall off the radar, should it?
Yeah, and that's what, that's all we'd have to make sure that it doesn't. So that we, so we're not sitting here in March or February when we're preparing for Springtown meeting and say, oh, yeah, remember the school? We forgot the school.
What was the name of that building?
Yeah, exactly.
I'm just, one last thing about Coolage, just, I don't know, if we can keep it in the back of our mind about the land itself, because it strikes me that we're gonna split that land. And if this handover action, you know, has any relationship to that, we should include it in there. Because I don't know if it's just, you know, they handed the key, or they have to do a legal research, or what.
Be the entire-
I also think that we should ask town council to look into what the legal steps are relative to a school department turning a building back to the town.
That's fine. If they can do it willy-nilly, then we'll just go in and rename all their buildings. That's fine. They claim they're-
We got a process. We got a process.
Yeah, no, but that's a fair point.
Alright, so that's good. So Coolage, we don't, we don't need money.
Under, you know, town control as far as maintenance and everything.
Three selectmen and there's three schools. I think we have them three.
Well, there's you guys, too.
That's for the gym.
Yeah, lavatories.
I want the sewage plant. Alright, so it sounds like we're working on details of the articles for closing out the seven fifty, signing mine to council aging, signing mine to special counsel, and as an initial take, dump on the rest in capital stabilization or OPEB?
I think the thought was, the preference was for the CBA increases was FinCom. Reserve, W.
Which one?
For FY fourteen increases-
For-
For the collective bargaining agreements that weren't-
Oh, no, no, I can say that in an operating one. I don't want to talk about that. No. I'm talking about the seven fifty article. Call it the seven fifty article. Close out the old one, sign some money to council on aging at golf course, sign some money to cover the one-time special counsel. And then the remainder gets allocated, at least on the initial draft, gets allocated to what, capital stabilization or OPEB? Or both?
I'd do both.
Ooh. I'm an OPEB guy, but, okay. I have a fear of bankruptcy because I like to at least get half, you know, half the money we're supposed to put in. It would be nice.
Are you looking for my comment?
Yes, I am. We're trying to direct them on how to write the damn thing. You a capital stabilization guy?
I, I'm afraid of the daunting number in the future that we have to pull out, you know, four million dollars in one budget year.
That's every year.
Yeah.
That's every year, including this year and last year and the year before.
So fifty-fifty would be fine with me.
Alright, we went up, fifty-fifty.
Are you recommending the full amount?
To what?
To OPEB?
No.
No, okay.
Write it up that way, write it up that way for presentation to us on the sixteenth.
I think our capital needs are just as dire. And when you look at money, it's a pressing issue as well.
Alright, so write it up that way for the sixteenth, and I'm sure we'll change our mind.
Fair enough.
Give us something on paper and we're less likely to. And then we got operating stuff and we got free cash stuff, which I consider two different things. But we got a big hunk of free cash, right? What's the number? One eight, one eight million or something?
Yes, one eight.
We have something airpacking about there, right, or?
I don't think it's been out there yet.
I saw it somewhere. Is it in there?
Seen it just as a FYI, but-
Yeah, I don't have any recollection of it.
Yeah, we got certified early, in fact, probably the earliest the town has ever certified, got certified. We're the first, first in our DOR reps region.
Did you bring it up last meeting?
I brought it up that we were-
Were certified, I recall that.
I saw the number somewhere.
Yeah, it's one point. I didn't give you the exact number.
Well, my question on free cash is, it's a big number. Where did most of it come from?
I can tell you that, too. It's, it's a mix. Maybe a third, half a million was some department turnbacks.
I recall FinCom did a fair amount of scouring, along with the audit reports, for previous items that were outstanding, previous authorizations that had not been returned.
So those were closed?
Part of it, I sat through that meeting. I'd be curious if that's where some of it came from.
Well, yeah, because I'm curious on how much of that is, you know, one-time efforts like that versus relatively routine departmental turnbacks?
Yeah, some of it, there's some other outliers in there, like the hundred and seventy thousand plus for the sale of Keen. Keen Ave and some other stuff. I can send, I'll send the board the exact breakdown of it. I wasn't prepared to talk about fourteen's free cash tonight, but-
Alright.
It's a little early normally, unless you're planning on doing something with fourteen's free cash in the fall, which I didn't, but-
We didn't know it was gonna be certified.
Sure we did.
We were about to go on vacation.
I knew it was coming.
It's just been about a week, right?
Well, I don't know, I mean-
Just got it, yeah.
My inclination would be to do something with it, even if it's just to dump it into this capital stabilization and stuff like that, but-
Yeah, you'd still want to leave some. We don't know what's gonna happen with the winter, and I'd rather personally just deal with it in the spring, but it's a lot of uncertainties.
Yeah, because I, you know, I also point out that if we used a bit of it, we could be creative and subsidize the tax rate in order to reduce the tax split.
Is that a one-time use?
Well, actually, I would probably do it three hundred, two hundred, one hundred for a soft landing in future years, but you could make a noticeable difference with three hundred grand. And I don't know that, you know, we're-
We had that discussion last year. I applaud Bill for his consistency and the, I'd like to see the numbers, you know, just to see if that is, is indeed, I believe you, Bill, but I want to see the numbers to see that it's factual.
Yeah, and, you know, I have, I doubt that we could put together an official analysis in time. And then again, I realize that means we will never be able to do that in a time limit, because we can't, it's meaningless to do it in the spring. Right, because the tax rate's already done. You gotta do it before the tax rate.
Yeah.
But, hmm. I don't know. So, what's the, what's the desire of the board here? We sit on free cash, or do we ponder something to do?
For tonight?
Uh, well, for fall town meeting. Do we do something with it, or do we continue thinking about something with it, or we just say, no, wait till spring?
I think we continue to think of potential ideas, hear what else is coming down the pike with other ideas, and if there's anything that comes up, we consider using it, unless there's other thoughts.
Yeah, given the timing, I just assume, figure we didn't get the number till October. That's just personal. Deal with it in the spring.
It's easier. Alright, so I guess the concept stays alive for another two weeks.
We just spent a half hour trying to pull apart seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and what are we gonna put it towards? I just, I don't know that we're ready to jump into pocketing away fourteen's free cash.
Yeah, I'm leaning towards you. I mean, it's a lot of money, it's important money, and-
Yeah.
And it needs to be very well thought out, but-
But I will provide the board the breakdown on where it came from. Get that out to you tomorrow.
I think it's still fair play for a discussion at the next meeting, just-
Well, you'll have it and you'll have the exact number. And just for the record, just kudos to the finance team and us getting it done. Again, it's a record year as far as getting certified free cash done as early as we have. And the closeout, and we're in good shape, so. And the, you know-
So what Kevin's saying, Bill, is that you're lucky to even have the option to think about this now.
I know. I'm with him. It's like, not having the option is easier to deal with, but they have the option. Next year, I want it by June, okay? Before the year closes.
I just want, yeah, I just highlighted the fact that we were negative seven hundred and fifty four years ago. We're in much better shape.
Yeah, we're a little better.
I guess my answer is maybe there'd be more to think about if we didn't have that other article available to us.
Yeah, that's a good point. I can dream about tax relief, but okay.
Oh, we all dream about tax relief.
I'll keep dreaming.
You want to do it with wisdom.
Now, the other thing I was thinking about for an article is, well, it has to do with the contracts. I mean, we know we need to increase the budget for that. We probably know a couple of little things, like, I don't know, the COA change is gonna add a few grand to operating costs or something like that. And my preference is to deal with that and ask town meeting permission before we spend the money rather than after we spend the money. So my suggestion is that we look at the non-real estate tax revenue assumptions and see if by the time we set the number for the tax hearing in the DOR paperwork, whether we can figure out a way to cover those known costs. Because I'm pretty sure our local receipt numbers are kind of on the low end of the range, the acceptable, reasonable-
I prefer conservative, but yeah.
So I think, you know, I think there's probably room in those numbers and maybe other numbers to cover these additional expenses and get them into the operating budget. And just take care of it now instead of later. I really, I don't like in the May meeting saying, oh, by the way, we spent eighty grand more than you gave us permission to. Can we, are you okay it now?
Or unanticipated, unanticipated, we could, we could take it from the already three hundred that's in the operating budget.
We could, but-
Since that gets turned back normally on average a hundred and eighty thousand.
I just like setting the budget, because these are costs that will be in next year's budget. They'll be in-
No, agreed, agreed.
So why not put them into fifteen?
Let me look at that closer. I think if anywhere, local receipts is gonna be, is the big one that comes to mind, or where there may be some new growth is, yeah, I think-
We had a pretty low new growth. I'm just saying, local receipts, we already know what the numbers are. We were guessing back in February, but we know the numbers. The numbers are, the closeout numbers are a lot bigger than we had guessed.
Right.
We should look at.
Yeah, a lot of that, too, was, we had a big excise, motor vehicle excise, big as well. Yeah, we can look at it.
Yeah, and, you know, trash ticker money's gotta go up. I don't know if we spent all the solar money, you know? I don't know if we allocated that. So, looks like there's options. And this is not stuff we're making up ideas to spend money. This is stuff that we're gonna spend money.
No, absolutely, yeah.
So let's just get the books right now. That's all.
Fair enough.
Anything else from the board on, on special town meeting articles? There is, there is a FinCom meeting on the twenty-second, which happens before the warrant closes. And I'm wondering if we might want to perhaps post anyways for a joint meeting that night, just in case we gotta tweak some articles or something. Um, just be safe and sorry. Because it'll be the first time they see them, and if they see something that we hadn't thought of that would be meaningful for town meeting, I would want to fix it before the warrant closes rather than after. So, it's just a thought, and we don't actually have to decide on that until the meeting on the sixteenth anyways, because there'll still be time to post. But I guess I'm asking the members if they would, uh-
Yeah, that's fine.
Keep that in mind. Keep in mind the twenty-second, keep it open. For the possible posting, but we would decide on the sixteenth.
They're meeting the twenty-second and the twenty-ninth?
They're meeting the twenty-second and the twenty-ninth, yeah. Which brings us to now the discussion of what's our logistics of approving the final articles in the warrant, since-
The thirtieth?
I'm not gonna be here on the thirtieth, the first, or the second.
You need to be?
Quorum-wise, we all need to be. Normally, I wouldn't, but we're a little shy of membership right now, so.
I was thinking of that, hopefully by the thirtieth, it's just a matter of approving signatures. It's pretty much gonna be vetted by-
Well, there might be some articles we haven't even seen that we have to then accept.
When are you out of town, Bill?
I'm out of town.
What about the twenty-ninth?
I'm flying out the, hang on a second. If I figure this damn phone- I'm flying out the evening of the twenty, I'm flying out the afternoon of the twenty-ninth, and I'm flying back late on the second, like midnight or something. So I could do a, I could do a, you know, if we had to do something that week, I could do something the morning of Monday, the twenty-ninth, or anytime on Friday, the third. But I'm not, I don't know if we actually have to act that week.
Yeah.
Can it wait till the seventh, or is it too late?
No, it's too, well-
I think we can, Bill, like Becky had the exact dates with the deadlines, but it's gonna be one of those things where like, we do it the night of the seventh, everything has to be in the newspaper and like-
Well, it's gonna be a bigger cost, that's all.
Oh, it's gonna go to Metro West?
Yeah. It'll have to. It'll have to. Has to be made available, and then, yeah, it'd have to go to the Metro West. It'd be, I mean, it's just gonna cost, it's gonna cost more, the longer we put it out on the calendar.
So can, we do like an eight AM on the twenty-ninth?
I cannot.
Can you do, uh, eight AM on the third? Or a four PM, or a ten, or a six PM for all I care, I don't know. I don't really know what the, the key deadlines are.
I have to look at my work schedule. I potentially could do a six PM on the third. But what, how much, are we only talking about approving something, or are we talking about having debates and discussion and?
Oh, we better be done with that stuff by then.
Yeah, so it's just a form of approval.
Final acceptance and approve the warrant and-
If you give a citizen's petition or something on the twenty-sixth after your meeting.
Yeah, or if somebody came with a change. You know, somebody changed the text, or we changed the text or something. We changed the text, we gotta approve that.
Try to lock it in on the sixteenth, maybe.
Well, I don't think we're gonna be able, well.
Not as far as the final date.
Yeah, on the sixteenth, we'll have an opportunity to talk. We'll each, all of us should have our-
We come pretty close, and actually, if we have that meeting potential on the twenty-second, if there's something we gotta finalize discussion-wise, we can do it then.
Right.
So I think the week of the twenty-ninth is strictly the, the required sign-off. But I'm, I'm still not-
You think that the twenty-second, are you still up in the air on whether that needs to be a joint meeting versus just we go into their FinCom meeting and explain? We're talking about six articles, seven articles.
Well, it depends whether we have, if we're good with all the wording of all the articles on the sixteenth, then we're good.
No, I mean, FinCom.
On the twenty-second?
Yeah, I mean, typically, we don't post a joint meeting. With FinCom, my point is if I plan on, if I plan on attending that meeting and speak to the articles, do you think there's any-
No, my thought was only flexibility in case they had suggestions for modifications to the articles, we would then have time to act.
Okay.
I don't know if they would.
Right.
But it's a tight deadline, and it costs the town money if we miss deadlines, barely, so.
Yes.
I'm just saying, we're just keeping that open, and maybe we'll know better on the sixteenth when I make that call for the twenty-second, but-
Yeah, that's planned out.
But I don't quite understand the deadlines for publication. That's our real driver?
Yeah.
And that's why?
Um, well, for the Beacon, it was gonna be the thirty-
Would have to be the thirtieth, because they publish on the second, and their deadline's Tuesday.
We go, we meet on the twenty-sixth. Forgot about that. Meet at the close of the warrant. And the Beacon, so, so the strategy is to publish in the Beacon, rather than distribute by mail?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the warrant closes twenty-sixth, so. I mean, we could do it at close of day at twenty-sixth.
I have the same situation, I just need to check my work schedule.
Otherwise, what's the deadline for the, uh, middlesex?
Um-
Metro West.
Metro West.
Metro West, we could get in. I think daily-
The warning to be eighth, I believe, is the deadline.
Yeah.
We need to have it two full weeks, right? Coming back from the twenty-seventh to the thirteenth. And they have a deadline a couple of days before that.
Yeah.
And they would have to publish, what are they required to publish?
I think it's the seventh or the eighth.
The entire warrant?
Yeah, and it'll be quite expensive because of the length of the, uh, the blight thing.
That's right. It's always gonna bite us. Alright. Yeah, your articles are really short. I like that.
Remember my best. Save an ink.
Alright, so I guess those are just considerations to mull over before the sixteenth, or we'll figure it out on the sixteenth. But, uh, yeah. I hadn't anticipated that, uh, town meeting deadline. And I hadn't anticipated three members.
Right.
Okay. So that's stuff for the sixteenth. Um, we have the fiscal fifteen budget as a line item, but I think that was actually a sub-line item under twelve, right?
Yeah.
There's nothing new to talk about.
Exactly.
So-
I bet tied into the discussion on what the preference was for dealing with the CBA increases as well as the legal budget, which we've already, we just discussed.
Gotcha. Alright, so, item fourteen, economic development updates. What have we built lately?
Updates, um, the town has met with a, uh, potential, uh, local, uh, brewery and, uh, restaurant owner, uh, which at this point will remain nameless, um, but an individual who's expressed interest in potentially locating in Clock Tower Place, uh, to locate the, uh, the brewery in a, um, in a pub within the existing building at, um, Clock Tower. And went, uh-
Was this our initiative, or is this, uh, an initiative of the business owner, or is it an initiative of Clock Tower?
It was an initiative of the business owner based on a referral of another business owner in town.
Okay.
Cool.
Yeah. Um, it looks vi, it looked pretty viable, um, the meeting went well, they left on good terms, and, uh, we're hopeful that something there will, will move forward. Be a good project for the town. Um, the other thing, speaking on, with regards to Clock Towers, just wanna let the board know, um, with regards to a tenant that's in the space there, Clock Tower, there's a recent article for, uh, ten fastest-growing private companies in the United States. Um, it was posted in Boston.com and some others, it was part of Business Insider. Um, but the KCR Communications is a tenant at Clock Tower Place. Um, they've seen a, uh, twenty thousand, six hundred and ninety percent growth um, since their existence, and their two thousand and thirteen revenues are just shy of seventy-eight million dollars, uh, from their start in two thousand and nine. They're located here in, uh, in the mill, um, one of seventy or so businesses that we really don't know much about. Um, but it's just, you know, really, really, really cool to see that, um, in the sense, Sacia Communications, they, they're a manufacturer of fiber optic materials uh, for high-speed data transmission. And, uh, you know, they, they credit their growth to cutting, cutting costs and taking clients away from big-time competitors. Um, so it's, it's pretty cool. They were, the, the neat, the neat part about the list of ten was that this particular company was the one that was really the, the highlighted one, and provided a picture of, uh, of their, um, Clock Tower location here in Maynard, and, and was one that was really spotlighted as, uh, you know, the Maynard-based, uh, Maynard-based company. Um, so, yeah, it's, uh, was this Maynard-based, the KDA Communications ranked fifth in the country, seeing revenue growth from two thousand and ten to thirteen, and, uh, it was the top-ranked telecommunication company in the country.
No, let's push that along to the Beacon, so they write an article on them, and so people will know that the, that the mill actually has some, uh, economic generating-
Some good tenants.
Some good tenants. I mean, that's the type of thing we need to, you know, market, market and advertise, and-
Yep.
Um, and we should be, we should be, come friendly with the CEO of that place, so they know who we are, so that they, they if they want to expand, they're starting to expand here in Maynard. Those are the types of things we need to do.
Absolutely.
So.
Came to our attention from a member of the Economic Development Committee, during an Economic Development Committee meeting.
Very nice.
She was looking at her phone.
Yeah, right. So it's good stuff.
I think that twenty thousand percent growth rate is a good target for you for increasing our economic base. Maybe over three years, to be fair.
Yeah. Um, yeah, just, uh, again, with regards to Walgreens, I've had my failures out to a potential local marketer, I mentioned in the past, Brothers Market. Had, um, some really good discussions with them, they really like Maynard, they like what it has to offer, but they're not willing to jump into anything because of, uh, the grocery store, that, uh, potential one twenty-nine Parker Street grocery store, and the likelihood of that going in. Um, and the reason that it doesn't work is the vicinity of several other grocery store locations to us, and um, Roach Brothers and Acton, Sudbury Farms, and Stowe, and, and as the crow flies between the one twenty-nine Parker Street location and Walgreens location, it just, it doesn't work. If the grocery store were to, you know, if they, if we were to call them back and say it's not happening, um, they would absolutely reconsider Maynard. Um, but I had a great, aside from that, a great conversation with the, uh, real estate analyst there, and, you know, had an opportunity to sell Maynard for what we had to offer, and, um, he really liked it, and it really fit into their Brothers Market concept, um, but, you know, again, just them knowing their market and, and where that, that is at, it's, it's it's on their radar, but it's not anything likely, so. We continue to monitor, um, that property and see what happens. It's still listed, uh, still listed with, um, CB Richard Ellis as a, uh, as a leasing piece that, um, Walgreens, aside from that, there's an update, it appears that Walgreens isn't the actual owner, they're lease, they're a leasie of the building, um, and they have a commitment still on their lease of several years, so, um, yeah, we don't know yet.
So we need that blight bylaw?
Yeah. I don't know if it'll sit, but.
That's actually an interesting, uh, test case.
Yeah. Um-
Yeah, 'cause if it's vacant, but it's under full lease and they're getting all the money, is it really vacant?
Right.
I think I heard a tree fall.
Yeah.
We got that problem with Clock Tower.
Well, they try to walk away on their lease on, you know, a buyout.
Yeah.
Agreement, but-
Okay.
Uh, that's really it. On the one twenty-nine Parker Street, we have a meeting scheduled with, uh, Bill Nemser and, uh, John Witten, uh, is a follow-up meeting, they got pushed out because of, uh, their schedules, um, and it's really a, a meeting to have the parties really understand, um, sort of in, in writing, if you will, where, what their, what their opinion is of existing, um, existing things such as the current, um, agreement that's in place, where, what they see that, because I think there's a lot of varying, uh, opinions on what is still um, in play, and, and we wanna really hear what, where they think, where their thoughts are on that. And, uh, I'm not sure that everything certainly doesn't line up with the town's position on some of it, so. There's a meeting scheduled for tomorrow afternoon with, uh, of which I'll participate with, uh, Bill and, um, John Witten and, uh, the developer and their attorney, so.
What will happen after that meeting? I'm, I'm just curious about discussions um, before town meeting in regards to the zoning article?
Uh, there won't be any other meetings other than, I'm sure they will, they will attend the, uh, hearing um, for that, but I don't anticipate any other action that they'll take prior to the-
They realize the article will lose, right, if they don't come down on their housing number?
I think that was pretty clear when we met with them, that that was the position. But we have, they have not come back. Maybe they'll, maybe this will be an opportunity for them to present a different position now that they've heard the town's position.
Sort of goes to the point-
Yeah, I mean, I would give them that opportunity, because it's, it's their mistake to make.
It's why, this is the, this is the time, I mean, I've said it before, this is the time for, we have leverage with this demand that they're making to increase the size of their supermarket. We should say, now's the time to shoot, to, well, can't say that, but now's the time to, to do something. Tell us if you're gonna do something. What's, what is their move? And if they don't move, they don't get their thirty-six hundred square feet. Simple as that.
Yeah, I mean, with the article piece, I mean, they're the trigger, there's, there's a reason for the article, but it's, it has to be clear, I mean, it's not, it's not an article for one twenty-nine Parker Street.
No, it's an, it's, it's an article for-
Zoning change across the board.
Realistically, it will be.
Yeah, fair enough, but-
And-
And the conversation will probably go there.
It'd be a lot easier conversation if they were on-
The question-
Concurred with our interpretation of the housing numbers currently allowed.
And isn't-
That would be good.
Yeah.
Otherwise-
We've driven it home, I don't know how many times.
And there's no doubt that the conversation-
Otherwise, they may be making a-
Conversation will also go to, well, what else, if we approve this, what's the plan? And if there's no plan, they don't got the votes.
I don't know about that, but I'm pretty sure if they-
I'll be honest, I think if they concurred with what we thought, then we wouldn't be here.
Yeah.
We wouldn't be having the conversation. There's, there's still clearly a residential gap. And that's what needs to be determined.
We were pretty clear that-
I don't think you're really gonna be able to hold them hostage for three thousand square feet. I, I think they'll go back to Price Chopper and adjust footprint by three thousand square feet, and continue to try and ram housing and retail down our throat.
I think the gain is a, from, you know, again, part of the gain is a, is a better product for Maynard in the sense of what they're proposing as a, as a Price Chopper model of this new concept grocery store. Versus them going down to their typical box square, you know, standard Price Chopper.
But they've told us, they've told us about four times already that if we don't get X, Price Chopper's not coming. They didn't get X. According to them, now Price Chopper's still coming. So when do we stop believing there, if we don't get, they're not coming?
Yeah, I just don't wanna risk losing the best supermarket possible for the town on a tactical error by them.
Yeah.
So the point is-
It'll be reiterated yet again.
They need to talk, we can talk.
We told them that at that meeting, that three hundred wasn't gonna work. And they, you know, there was no decisions or action made by them that they would have to go back to the bank, and we haven't heard anything since. So.
Well, three hundred would be-
Right.
Would be, would be litigated.
Well, that's-
But.
Alright, yeah. Well, hopefully you can nudge them. Anything else on the, uh-
No, that's it on the economic development.
Okay. Uh, town administrator report, how was your vacation?
It was excellent, thank you. We, the summer decided to come the last week of, uh, August, it worked out well for my advantage. We spent the week in Sebago Lake in Naples, Maine, and kids, uh, enjoyed it and go back to school tomorrow. So it was good, thanks for asking. Um, don't have a whole lot, just, uh, wanna give the board a status on the, um, streetlights, I don't know if Vic mentioned it, he may have mentioned something even.
Oh, the LED lights, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's one piece that's moving forward with the, with the retrofitting to all LEDs, and I'll have all that breakdown for the board at our next meeting, um, but as far as the, the lights that weren't working, um, downtown and everywhere else, um, we've done drastically ninety-nine point five percent of everything. There's a couple of lights, uh, including the lights in front of McDonald's are now powered, if anybody's had a chance, because they've never been on, so. We wanna take a look at that now. Um, one of the bulbs out of the four needs attention, we think it's, it's either a bulb or a ballast issue, um, that, that the electrician is slated to go take a look at that. But the big part was the N-Star connection, N-Star was out, those are now illuminated and, and working. Um, the poles are installed at the parking deck, they're powered, they were actually turned on live today. Um, you'll notice for a couple of days, at least through part of today and into tomorrow, they're actually left on, um, as continuous operation. Uh, we, which in our, we may end up seeing some calls asking why the town has the lights on at two in the, two in the afternoon, but there's, there's reasoning. And we'll be tying in the, uh, the sensor directly to those, those units. We also added in a smaller one, if you noticed, uh, just went in recently on the actual ramp up alongside the bank, which is actually on the, it's on, it's not on a pole, it's mounted to the wall itself, which illuminates that ramp, and it's been a big-
I haven't seen that.
Big addition to, to that area.
Does it go above and over?
Uh, it'll, because the wall's so high-
Yeah.
It illuminates down like this off of the wall, it's, it's basically a surface mount-
Yeah, okay.
Uh, unit. The other ones are, um-
Spotlight or a garage, garage type like, yeah, 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 okay.
Wall, surface mount-
I haven't seen that.
Which illuminates- Which illuminates that ramp, and then the other poles are now in and working. So that's, uh, that's a good thing. And with three, the other, the other piece of that, that started working on the cap on the actual wall in the, uh, early next week, I think the ninth, the fence company will be back to, do the final install on the fence and another small section up top where, where it's at, where it comes down, that embankment up that road by the bank as well. So it's, it's shaping up.
Do you think they'll be ready by Maynard Fest?
Yes. My goal is they're ready for, at least all of that work done by the road race, which is the 13th, so. The only piece, at that point, the only piece remaining would be, you know, at that point we'll be able to take down all the fencing. Everything will be up, we've been getting some good grass growth out there, rotating, following the water restriction requirements with timers and so forth, and we're getting some good grass growth. We'll have to hit it again in the spring, but at least we're getting something there. And the last couple of items is the, the two additional parking spaces out on Nathan Street that need to be striped, and the discussion of the mural, uh, you know, for the wall itself. Which we have, I think, one or two concepts anyway that's been provided by Ms. Carter. I don't know if we've, have you seen anything else from her? See, I think she's done two different versions of some type of rendition, but.
The concern right now is that if it doesn't get done soon, we'll probably have to wait till the spring because of the type of paint.
Right.
I'd rather wait until we know that we like this concept, or someone else comes in with an idea we like better, whatever.
Just don't want it to be 18-month wall like this one.
Does she have the prototypes ready?
I emailed us a concept design I could forward to you.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
I haven't seen it, but I like it, I like all her stuff.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah, this is more of a non-Maynard, in the sense of it's, it's more of a, yeah, it's not the typical clock tower or anything tied really in Maynard history, it's more just kind of like a.
Supposed to be Asabet River.
River with some looms or whatever's in there, you know, type of.
Yeah, she's very, very talented, so I imagine it would be.
Well, yeah, it, it's, it's a nice concept, I certainly don't want to be the one to choose.
You're gonna make us do that?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good policy decision.
Pass it off to Hister.
Uh, what else do I have? Parking deck, the streetlights, uh, the veterans chair, we're working on, uh, finalizing that.
POW.
Getting, yeah, the POW chair, a permanent chair in, uh, all of the roped-off entities, et cetera, for the lobby, when we get the lobby, um, project. And then also acquiring a, a folding chair, which is, isn't as nice as the permanent chair that would be on display in the lobby, but it's a folding chair that is one that's actually been depicted in most of the materials that the board has seen, and that was, uh, an outdoor seat that's really intended to be used on the road, in the sense of setting up, bringing the chair, it's, it's left at different functions and, um, it's kind of a travel chair that.
So like if you go to the Veterans Day ceremony, you put that chair out.
Absolutely, yeah. So we're looking at acquiring both of those, and, and that's moving along. That's it, you got anything?
I wanted to give a very brief, um, update on what's going on with the COA staffing. And, um, we are, we, meaning the Council on Aging Board and myself, are meeting regularly to discuss, uh, where do we go from where we are? And, uh, there's a strong feeling that we still don't know exactly what we're trying to, where we're trying to get to in terms of the management structure. We know that we need to provide more outreach services, the direct services to seniors. So our short-term focus is on trying to resolve as quickly as possible, how do we provide at least a, a minimal, a number of outreach services? As an example, I was getting calls last week for a senior in town who needed assistance that was way out of my expertise level. And, um, so I'm happy to try to help, but at a certain point, we need real experts in the field. In the meantime, I'm working with both Stowe and Acton to continue discussing, uh, co-management opportunities. Acton Selectmen suggested that we write a joint CIC grant, uh, to try to facilitate that. So that's an ongoing conversation, we're gonna pick up again in the next couple of days and see where that goes. So in the short term, I think what we're gonna propose is that we try to divert the existing salary money into outreach services, so those can be provided as soon as possible. And then later in the fiscal year, budget year, come back with a more formal plan for a staffing profile. I can tell you now that in all likelihood it will include, uh, requests for more, uh, staff hours than we've had previously.
So are you looking for full, full-time? Do you think that that's what the model's gonna be, or do you think?
Depending on how the conversations with Stowe and Acton proceed, I can see a joint management, uh, with appropriate clerical support, covering the bases there. And that would free up, let's say, you know, half or more of our vacant director's salary, but that's already only a part-time salary. So just to give, you know, part-time or three-quarter time outreach services, we'd have to see an increase. So it's very, it's far too soon, but I don't want folks to be asking, you know, why haven't you put a job description out there, why haven't you tried to hire? We don't want to hire the wrong thing in the short term.
Makes sense.
Want to make sure we're making the right call. In the meantime, we're trying to, to do something that, uh, services are required. So it's not being ignored, it's just being cautious.
So do you think there's enough funds available to, uh, hire that contract outreach services for this fiscal year? You don't need any more money?
I do, I, I met with the town accountant, and, um, I think that we have enough money in the current budget for the rest of the year to provide some services fairly quickly. And again, and figure out sort of what our real long-term cost would be. One thing we don't know right now, for instance, is the precise salary that would be appropriate to hire somebody. So we can contract through agencies like Minuteman for certain types of services at certain fee rates. So once you turn that into a full-time, part-time employee, you should see some cost savings there. So getting really good numbers and not just throwing numbers at the wall is what I prefer to do. But we, we have money in the current budget. There's, there's, there's money been left on the table in the past within the COA budget.
Okay. All right, uh, the chair report, a couple of things. Next meeting, uh, we have Kate Hogan coming in at 7:30, I believe, to, uh, talk a little bit about the senior tax relief policy that Sudbury did, their home rule petition. So, uh, we should all be on best behavior, and, uh, that's good of her to come. Uh, we also have, I understand we have a fire department event, or?
That's correct, it's actually a two, I gotta confirm with the chief if both are still on. There's a, a recognition, uh, awards piece, and then there's also a piece, uh, with regards to a longtime retiring, uh, fire, and was actually already retired, but some sort of acknowledgement for, um, Jerry Byrne, uh, former firefighter, just recently retired, as well as some service awards. So the conversation, because we do also have a hearing scheduled, I think, for 7:15.
Yeah.
Whether we, we hold, we set a meeting for 6:30 or 6:45, I just don't know, I gotta follow up with the chief.
I mean, I think, well, I think 6:45 is plenty early enough to accomplish that.
Yeah.
Maybe even seven, but I, I guess the question to you guys is, you okay meeting at 6:45 on the 16th?
Sure.
I mean, it kinda seems like those recognition ceremonies, we're, we tend to do that now, 15 minutes before the standard start time.
Yes, and move along.
That's fine.
They usually have some real, uh, party and celebration when they leave here.
Yeah, right, right, we miss the good stuff.
We're, we're left here.
Don't we all?
All right, so let's, let's do that at 6:45. There any news on, on determining the cultural district hearing options? Talk about, I was curious whether we had to host it, or somebody else could host it, or we just had to attend, or what?
They can have their own hearing, right?
Yeah, we have some hurry up the weekends for you. So the woman from the state office finally confirmed that she was available, but she picked a date that was one of our selectman meetings. In between me reaching out to her and you and I speaking, suggesting that we shouldn't do it on a selectman meeting night. So I've gone back to her to say, that's great, but now we're gonna pick a different date. And of course, I got an auto reply email that she's on vacation this week, so.
She really needs to meet there.
Yeah, so in any case, I was told this afternoon that I could schedule through her assistant, and, um, I'm waiting for that woman's last name so I can actually catch her and get this thing scheduled. But we're looking at early October. It does not need to be at a selectman's meeting, nor do you need to attend, although that would be really sweet.
And at some point, we'd have to endorse her something.
An application that would come.
Oh, it's our application, that's right, I forgot.
We can't submit the application till after the public hearing.
Right.
All right. Uh, one other thing for the board, in your, um, Dropbox is a, uh, a draft response from the board to planning board on their query about comments on the 4950 on Waltham Street. Um, do we have any, um, suggestions for, uh, changes, or is it okay? Can I send it off to them, is the question?
Uh, yeah, it's kind of ironic that here the development principles appear up on the, uh, on the wall, and that's the highlight basically of your commentary, so I have no problem with the comments being made.
And the focus is really, you know, comments from the board, rather than, you know, we as our own individual residents of town can feel free to comment on what, separately from the board, but I was just trying to put together some comments from the board of selectmen in regard to that particular project.
It's a good reminder, uh, to them about, hey, these development principles exist, and when they're making decisions as planning board members, they should be keeping those in mind.
Although I notice now it'd be nice if I spelled Waltham correctly. But, uh, Jason, you got any comments on that? I know it's not real exciting, planning board stuff dealing with streetlight heights and things, but.
I left that board.
Trying to stick with the big picture.
I left that board, Bill.
I do too, but it's not really a board of selectmen thing.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, as far as screening and parking, I don't really have any comment.
Okay.
It'll be determined by the, by that board.
That's fine. And I note that, I think we got in our email today, information on Acton Street, I guess, right?
Yes.
And I don't think the board as a whole will have time to act or reply before the deadline, so. I think we've missed our opportunity on that one.
Unless it had been here tonight, we should have asked, uh, the developer to bring it.
Yeah.
I'm joking, but.
Avoiding the whole thought that you can't have really any discussion.
That's right. Let's see, and anything else? Oh, one last real important thing for the board. These guys are not afraid of me. They'd be perfectly willing to move closer to me if we could give them the keys to the drawers.
Good to know.
I like my seat, Bill.
Just for appearances. We may just all move closer to you.
I would, I would actually prefer to be on that side if I could, because it's.
You could still sit in that seat.
I can't hear out of my right ear, and so.
Yeah, so, you know.
If I get in the middle, I can hear better.
Drawers not that far away.
Just with that.
I didn't think anybody used the drawers in the first place.
I didn't know.
I use a drawer for, you know, stuff, but more importantly, in the wintertime, when you got a cold or something, you can.
Yes.
Keep mine stocked with the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence.
We should have the, um, the charter in there in case you have to refer to the charter.
Oh, that's a good point, man.
It could be the iPad too, but sometimes it's tough, tough to.
All right, so that's it for the chair report, and then in their old new business, I just throw two little things up. One, a query, I noticed Senator Eldridge sent along a letter today to everybody, saying all the wonderful things he's done. One, he mentioned the housing authority and a new law stating a member has to be a resident of the properties. Is that an issue for us, or are we gonna have to deal with that later? I don't know what the makeup of our housing authority is.
Yeah, I think there might already be one.
Okay.
Yeah, there is a, there is a, an outline as far as the, the elected, uh, group goes, but yeah, that's one change.
You just got that letter today, I think I got that sometime last week.
Oh, well, mine was personalized.
Yeah, so was mine.
I have no idea. Different mailman, you know. Uh, and then the only other, uh, request is the, um, the little sign in front of the fire station. With less than a week to go before a state election, could we actually, like, publicize that?
I would add, without jumping on Bill here, I would add that the sign out front, at least the last time I saw it, was also empty, the one in front of town hall.
But I think, you know, we, those signs, I, my opinion is a priority use is election and town meeting notification. I barely, I barely remember that there's an election in a week.
We could have put up messages about nomination papers and all that other stuff, but.
Yeah, but I mean, this is, this is real estate election.
I understand.
I hate being lonely when I go vote. All right, that's it for me, old new business, uh, David?
Yes, a couple of quick things. First, I think, not that I really have a problem with it, but I think the sign at the new mobile station is in violation of our sign bylaw. The electronic, we, if I remember correctly, BP had a sign that's very similar several years ago, and we, we required them to take it down because it was in violation of our sign bylaw. I see that mobile station has the same type of sign.
This brought to our attention last week, and it was approved.
It was approved by whom?
The planning board, I believe, is that how, how that would work? I have the document.
Really?
We should tell the other guys then.
Not on the planning board.
You weren't on there?
Tell BP that, or whatever it is called now.
Well, it may be a different exception, it's, um, it's not an internally illuminated sign. It is surface-mounted LEDs.
So, it's a little background, the difference between the two, without having seen, without having seen this more recent one, was part of the difference was the original BP sign also had, uh, intensity issues. Also known as the entire intersection glowed green at night.
Yeah.
Which, which had led to some, some discussions on the planning board about LED intent, illumination intensity on these signs, which was covered after that point with the first go-around of Price Chopper in 2009? Okay, in 2009, where LED intensity was reviewed.
Yeah.
So I'd be interested to see that, I'll talk to Bill tomorrow.
I'll scan the documents and email them off.
As long as we're being consistent with the business owners, it's.
Yeah. You know, unintended consequences down the road is always a problem too, when you start making exceptions like that. Be that as it may. Are we all set with our applications to CPA for the projects that we talked about a couple of meetings ago? We were gonna be doing the historical thing here in, in town hall, those.
Where is that, that was, uh?
I think we talked about three projects that we were.
Yeah, I mean, let's do the 26.
We still have time on it?
We do.
Okay. As long as it doesn't fall off.
Yeah, we met on it, um. We met on it, um, we, we, it just hasn't been completed yet, but.
Bill addressed the next one with the Waltham Street comments, I wanted to make sure we went over those. And then lastly, uh, Ken, you're here, but has anyone commented on the fact that it seems like the lights in the school never go out?
I'm sorry?
The lights in the high school seem to be on all night, is that, uh?
I've heard that comment recently.
And it happened last year and then there was a complaint file, you know, complaint made, and it, they started to turn them off. And now as school approached, about a week before school started, I noticed that the lights were on all night. You know, I think Vic asked us early in their meeting, what are our savings for the, uh, the solar farm? Uh, they're all going out the window at the high school. So I would appreciate if the, the schools would, uh, look into that. And Kevin, if you wanna call Dr. Girardi or, uh, Ken, if you wanna take an opportunity to reach out, that's fine. I just wanted somebody to take notice of the fact. It's lit up like a Christmas tree.
Doesn't the Green Communities Committee do real-time monitoring of that stuff? Don't you just watch that?
No.
That is all.
We have done some assessments in the past, utilizing Maynard, Ken, volunteers and some others, but, uh.
I thought monitoring was required under the grant, but okay, that's fine.
Yeah, no, there is some, uh, energy consumption piece of it, yeah, yeah. But it's, it's an outlier because you're talking about a new high school, when the grant was based on an old high school, there's automatically, it ends up being more energy consumption because it's, it's, uh, everything's operating in the new high school. The old high school was one of our most, uh, green, green buildings, because nothing worked, so.
I getcha.
Everything was shut down and, you know, when you looked at efficiency, it looked like a pretty efficient building. But now, so it's a little bit of a play with that one.
Got it.
Yeah.
And I don't know, maybe it's cheaper to leave those lights on, you know, they might be energy-efficient light bulbs or whatever, but it's just, it looks odd when you drive past at night.
It's chip-certified.
Yeah.
Building. Yeah, I don't know, I'll, I'll look into it, let's see what's going on.
All right, anything else?
Yeah.
Jason?
It's actually, it was already covered in the T A's report.
Nice.
Very nice.
All right, so, uh, I guess there's only one thing left to do.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn a second, all in favor? Thank you very much.